And the sprayer equipment also has a wider wheelbase. And again, that was certainly an issue. We took, we've met several times and looked for ways to accommodate both the pedestrian safety as well as the movement of vehicles. So just kind of back to that purpose. There were two purposes for the meeting, median, meeting. One of them was traffic calming. There was a concern related to the rural nature of the roadway before the project began, that there's a lot of high-speed traffic out there that was observed. So it made some sense, especially for westbound vehicles that were coming out of the rural area and into an urbanizing area, that they see the median as a narrow passage and reduce the speed. And that improves the safety performance of the roadway, you know, not just at the crossing, but further west in the urbanizing part of the community. Also, as I talked about, the pedestrians only have to cross one lane at a time. So when the project was, or excuse, when the project was completed, it was observed that the flat-faced curbs did cause a significant problem for those oversized vehicles. So we moved to reduce the flat face of the curb, make it mountable, which is a, you know, relatively, again, a contemporary thing that you see a lot of in various applications in medians. So we went out there and ground that curb down. And this is what it looks like. And I guess I would call your attention to the photograph. You can see clearly the tire tracks going across the median that a vehicle clearly was able to translate that, looks like, at a consistent speed. So that is kind of where we are today. That was what operated, what we operated through the harvest season this fall. And we're here to, you know, continue the, continue that evaluation of how that performed.
Dave, how much of that lip is left on that? If you want to back up on, can you back?
It's about an inch and a half at the bottom.
Okay.
And then goes up to about, well, goes up to six inches all the way out, but at the curb, it's about four inches at the back of the curb.
Okay.
So the first thing that we evaluated was the traffic speed. Is the median indeed doing the traffic calming that we wanted to do? And the good news is, yes, it is. We're seeing average speeds at very close to the posted speed limit, and which is really good. And I think that's a great improvement. I know that we're not seeing that performance on K Street. There's a lot of speedy traffic on that project as well. So that was a very good result of the median that is still performing and making the corridor safer. We also did a traffic count. And again, part of the reason for doing a traffic count is, you know, A, is it meeting the projected traffic that we have? What is the vehicle mix? As well as are the appropriate safety measures are driven by an exposure index, which is basically the number of cars versus the number of pedestrians. And so the good news is, is that the community is growing. This traffic count is higher than the traffic count that we took to start the project by about 800 vehicles. So that's a good sign. We also took data for five days, so it's a good average, a good solid average. We didn't just go out and count for one day. We counted for five days. In that five-day period from, in the middle of October, we use a video to count the traffic. No oversized vehicles were observed in that five-day period. We were hoping to catch some video of that happening as well, but during that period, we did not observe any of that traffic. So all good news. So the, kind of the evaluation, also, the council asked us to look at other pedestrian safety measures that are out there, one of them being the flashing beacon or other type of lighted crossing warning. And again, based on the speeds that we observed, 35 miles an hour, so that's good, that that's working. And the volume of traffic that we have, it doesn't meet that higher tier, tier three of protection that's warranted. And that's also a fairly significant expense with power and whatnot, that that's about $140,000 improvement. That is, again, based on the ASHTO, which is the American Association of State Highway Transportation Officials, is what ASHTO stands for. That's a national standard. So that higher level of crossing protection is not warranted at this time. We also sought user feedback and, again, observed the tire marks that went over the top. So clearly, clearly that was utilized. And the object markers or the yellow sign there was placed far enough out of the way so it wasn't damaged when that happened. We received no complaints and one compliment for the median improvements. We also had the fire department operate their vehicle over the median.
I mean, that's not even hard on the tires or anything, so. Yep, he's got it.
So it's a little harder to see because it still wasn't painted yellow yet, but clearly the emergency vehicles can articulate over the median without much of a challenge. So our recommendation is that the modifications were successful and that no further modifications are necessary. I also think it's important that there is not a reduction in pedestrian safety as a result of the modifications. We've achieved the speed, the operating speeds that we want. And I think it's a really good compromise without sacrificing pedestrian safety. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that anyone has, or?
Yeah. I have talked to one farmer. He actually seeked me out and told me that it was, it is a good fix, is a good compromise. I think we have a responsibility to the pedestrian, the bicyclist, and the farmer, and I think this was a viable fix for all parties involved.
I also too feel that there's no further modifications needed.
I'm curious to know, said that we did, I'm not sure if you can back up. Did, you sought feedback. Who did you seek feedback from? Did you go back to the farmers that were here?
Caleb, that was your?
We've waited for any farmers to reach out for us, and we need the farmers that reached out. Fire department.
Okay. I did go back out to all the farmers that were here the night that we, that they all came in, just to ask them how they thought it was going. And some others also reached out to me. And of the 12, 11 of them still have issues with it. One did say it was good. They were able to get through fine. We have several of our farmers that have tracks on their tractors, and while they can get up on there more easily, it's hard on the tracks, and they just worry about what it's going to do over time. We also have four businesses who travel through here very frequently, and while they have feedback, they aren't willing to really seek us out to provide it because they don't want their names exposed. Several of the farmers did say that, they did recognize and acknowledge that it is better. And I do want to make sure that you know that.
Certainly is a compromise.
Yes. The one thing that sticks out to me is that I heard from more than a few of them that they avoided the area altogether this harvest season because they just didn't want to deal with it. And that could be why you didn't see traffic going through.
Yeah, we really tried to time that with the harvest, where the weather was and...
Yeah, yeah. And they're going around, they're going around it because they saw it and they still didn't think it would work. They tried it and said, we're not going to be slowed down by that and put our equipment through that. So they're taking other avenues. And that, that kind of bothers me. I mean, this is a farm-to-market road and the way to our two industrial parks. That's what I have. I also, you know, before had asked several pedestrians in my area if they would stop and stand there on their walks, and they all said no, they would make sure they could cross all the way. Now, I don't know if over time they would get more comfortable, you know, because it's new at this time, some of those, you know.
I think you have to keep in mind that it's also a great, a great safety net for people that are, have a handicap, right? Maybe they're not as fast or in a wheelchair, have some type of assist. So it's a great way that they get out there and have a concern with trying to cross with maybe oncoming traffic, that it's a safe spot for them to wait until traffic crosses.
And I think with the slowing measures it's achieved is a big assist in that area. Josh, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I think it's a great compromise. You know, you're always going to have a level of conflict in an area, bike trail, and a road of this nature, short of very, very expensive other solutions, which just don't really make a whole lot of sense. I think this is great. I did speak to a couple business owners in the area, not farmers, but bigger truck and equipment operators, and everyone was basically like, well, it's not perfect, but it works. And, you know, they recognize that there is going to be a little bit of give and take to both. You want to keep bicyclists safe, you want to keep lightest traffic safe. And so I think it's a great job done here, and I appreciate the ease with which the ambulance is able to navigate it as well.
Yeah, I heard the same as Melissa. Compromise doable, but avoided, which is probably why we didn't see it. And I think it was, you know, doable with some long-term concerns of the lower farm equipment and what that might do to those things over time. So, you know, when I look at it as being a farm-to-market road, and the farmer's going, it's doable, but we're concerned long-term, I still kind of go back to the, seems like a nice FY '27 project. So, kind of where I stand still.
I think we left it, if I'm not mistaken, we left it as kind of an ongoing evaluation, if I'm not, am I correct in that, or am I mistaken?
Right. I believe that's correct.
That we would evaluate it, will give us more time to see where we are with it. I've had positive comments on it from both farm folks and also from some of the folks that are on 14th Street, have businesses on there that carry wide loads, and they've been up over that. And back to that point, it's a compromise. You know, it's a money-saving opportunity, and if it works, it works. I think sometimes we get to a point where, you know, it's not exactly what we want, so then we'll try to find ways not to, you know, maybe somebody that was using it in the past or hadn't used it in the past or had complained, and it was difficult for them to use, but they're just concerned about their equipment. I get that, I understand that too. But obviously, people were using it because you saw the tire tracks there. So I think that, I think, given a little more time, I think you'll find that compromise sometimes isn't going to please everybody, and we cannot always, that's what happens with compromises, you have good and bad. And so you're going to have to take a little bit and give a little bit, and I think that's what we've done here. I think we just need to keep monitoring it. We look at it through next year, both in planting season and harvest again, and then if we think that it's not ever going to work and we still have multiple, multiple complaints, then I think that's maybe something we look at, too. I think that's kind of where we left it before. Again, I don't have a vote on this, but I just think from hearing, from what I've heard from constituents and farmers, and what I'm hearing here is that there's really a consensus to do anything differently other than what we're doing and modify it, keep it modified that we have, and then go forward with, continue it, evaluation. Am I wrong on that? Or can I?
I think the reason there aren't more tracks on it is because the farmers are just avoiding it. They tried it, and it's slowing down their operation.
Did you actually ask them if they've tried it?
Yes.
And they didn't like it?
They didn't like it. If they don't, if they have tracks, again, like I said before, it's going to wear and tear on those tracks, and the cost to repair the track is $30,000.
Well, I think you folks are going to make that decision down the road here. I just think it's something we'll have to continue to evaluate at this point in time. I don't think it's a budget issue that we have available to do anything with it right now. Okay? Any other questions for Dave?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Thanks, Dave.
And we are now moving to Main Street, right? There we go.
Okay. So just kind of a quick update from Main Street. Wanted to give you kind of an overview of what '25 looked like and going into '26. When we began the program, you can see our transformation strategies have remained the same, looking at some of the projects and tasks that were ahead of us. If you're looking at this particular grid, this is the one-to-five-year program. Kind of at the beginning, at the top, you're going to see your one, below your two, your three, and your four. So this is a bit of a checklist for us to kind of go through where we're at with those tasks and kind of timeline of where we would like to be, running a little bit ahead on a few of them, which is certainly good news for us. But that gives you some of our focus areas going into '26. Again, most of them aligning with our transformation strategies that were, that we went over with Main Street Iowa when we created the program in August of '24. Looking at our metrics for '26, we wanted to key in on some of the things that we wanted to make specific goals for '26, strategies. Again, that was going back to our transformation strategies. Big focus on budget and responsible spending. The new programs to this will be the long-term business programs that we will put in, short-term business incentives, things like downtown dough. Some of those have already been put into place. Again, one of the things I feel like Main Street's pretty well-known for is their events, particularly Wine Witches and Brews and Home for the Holidays, which I will be able to provide a little bit of data from those two. Increasing our fundraising efforts, supporting our four pillars, which that's design, promotion, economic vitality, and organization. And then again, utilizing our workshops, our free workshops for our businesses, and anybody who wants to join those free workshops, we have twice a year. So as far as my quarterly reporting, and this is something that all of us Main Street communities do with Main Street Iowa. This is going to run October '24 through October '25. So looking at that as kind of what we consider our first full year. Business starts and relocation expansions, that's going to be the businesses that came in and out of the district, the new jobs it created, the completed building projects, real estate, private investment from our businesses or building owners, public investment. A lot of that was some of the reporting that went from the region's building. So public, a lot of that came out of the city itself. And then our volunteer hours, happy to say we were ranked greatly above a lot of other communities as far as our volunteer hours went. So 4,200 was our volunteer hours, just October to October. So super proud of that, as volunteer work, as you all know, is definitely hard to come by. Our biggest goal for '26 is going to be the Rise, Revive, and Thrive Initiative. That is going to be the first Main Street internal grant program. This came about initially because I found in talking to businesses that a lot of businesses were looking at small-scale projects. A lot of the state grant opportunities are for much larger scaled projects. They're all very highly competitive. So getting a grant at the state levels was becoming more and more difficult to get with the amount of applicants that were applying for them. So in creating this, I worked, by the way, MIPA was a huge resource in this, being able to fine-tune a grant program, sort of take my thoughts and ideas, execution action plans. MIPA was able to work with me a little bit on fine-tuning all of those. Picked Rachel's brain, obviously, as well on some different grant strategies that could maybe set us apart from the grants. But I was really looking for one that was very broad and that didn't have a whole lot of red tape. I think the biggest obstacle with some of these grants is the amount of red tape that they have to go through to even be eligible. Again, finding it a little bit disappointing that so many of them were just project-specific. My thought process being, what if we gave our small businesses an opportunity to apply for a grant that housed multiple projects on a little bit smaller scale? Because what I found was, a lot of them are just hurting in reserves within their business, meaning the majority of what they're taking in is what they need to keep their businesses going. So I'm, probably of all the projects thus far that I've worked on, this is the one that I'm definitely, you know, most passionate about. Again, able to work with MIPA on all the logistics and the funding plan overviews on fine-tuning this, and I think a matching grant program also lets the businesses be responsible on their end for supplying 50% of that grant opportunity.
Who'd you work with at MIPA?
What's that?
Who'd you work with at?
I worked with Z Chen.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. So, yeah, he was a big advocate. When I first kind of went to him, just with his experience and knowledge and said, you know, hey, what do you think about this? This stemmed from the Rural Initiative that I had been working with a little bit. And went as far as we, I don't know if it was, if it helped me or hurt me to know that we ended up landing, I think, for a few of the judges in the top eight, they took the top five out of the state, which was painful. But I thought it interesting that, he said, one of the negatives, which is a good thing, is they were here for the event that they had at Simpson, and he said it was difficult because when we went through Indianola Downtown, kudos to everybody sitting here, they felt like Indianola was thriving, that when they went downtown, they didn't get, you know, they didn't get the impression. But when you kind of peel back the layers and start talking to these businesses, a lot of them, you know, have very outdated software, old signage or no signage at all. So these are the small projects that I think would make a big impact on making our downtown more desirable. But, so after the grant process was through, they called a meeting with some of the judges to pick their brains with me on what they thought behind the scenes of the grant program. And really not a lot of changes, which was good news, because that meant the work we had put in prior to was complete, thorough, and it made sense. So this is something I will continue to work on, potentially launch date of spring. I may move it to fall. If we're not ready by spring, it will launch in the fall. We certainly hope for this to be a revolving grant program on our end. So probably one of the more exciting things to come for 2026.
Sorry, I got a quick question. So on that, on that front, will you notify all the business owners on and around the square then, at that potential?
That's correct. All 141 will be eligible to apply.
But, well, I mean, how will they find out about it, though?
Yeah, so not only will we be doing one-on-one starting in January, we'll hold a workshop prior to. What I had talked about with MIPA, which I think would be very helpful, is to actually, for anybody interested, hold a workshop on what you can apply, what this grant can be used on, and how to apply for it. So one of the things I noticed was grants are a little scary for people who have not applied for one. And I said, what if, you know, we were able to do a workshop that kind of walked them through this process step by step? So there'll be probably three different ways that they find out about this. This will go out to the emailing list to all of those businesses. Once we launch, open the application, we will hold the workshop during the application process. And then in January and February, Business Outreach will be doing their one-on-ones with each of the businesses in the district, and some of that information will be given to them at that time, too. So three opportunities for awareness on the grant opportunity itself and explanation of.
Thank you.
Erica, who is approving the grants for the individual businesses?
The Economic Vitality pillar will head the grant, the execution of the program. They will put together a scoring committee. So those applications will be submitted to Main Street. It will be... It will be passed on to Economic Vitality, who will put together an outside committee that will score and analyze the applications.
And you said, if you don't launch in the spring, you'll launch in the fall.
Yeah.
Is there a reason you wouldn't do it in the summer?
Yeah, just given, I want, I want to make sure this, when this thing is put out, it's very ready to go. If I do, if I do fall, that is going to give them till the end of the year, basically. Then the application process would start at the beginning of the year. Just with our fall and that schedule that we have going, my fear was to put that on top of our three busiest months of the year, which is following that, might get a little hairy. So opening it up, but yet closing it then at the end of the year sets us up for January.
Thank you.
So the market snapshot, this is done through Main Street Iowa. So this is kind of our overview and the demographics for Indianola specific. This one was done in 2024. This is something that I plan to do on a pretty regular basis to keep it fairly updated. But it just kind of walks us through a few different things from our community and how we compare to other Main Street communities. When Economic Vitality comes and does the yearly visits, Jacob was at that meeting as well. She was able to kind of walk through each of the pieces of this puzzle. And this is something that actually a lot of us can use for different reasons. Certainly something I can share with all of you in the future as well. Some of the key areas that we're focusing in on from this was population and our daytime retention. For our particular population was a plus. That means we're retaining a lot of the daytime traffic. Our median age of 34 is gonna help us with the marketing strategies, but I want to be mindful at the percentage of seniors that we have in our community that are currently on social security. So all of these can just be used for different marketing strategies for small business. Percentage of our population that's employed, consumer spending trends and where they are now and what they're projected to be out for about three years helps us know what those spending trends are to look like at the end of 2028. Workforce issues and healthcare costs are at the top concerns for most businesses right now. For us, I think we need to pay a little bit more attention to the role that Simpson College students and staff play. That relationship, for a long time, has been almost non-existent. And we're working very closely and very hard with Simpson College right now to try to, if you will, shorten the one-block gap that has really proven to be, you know, a detriment for our downtown. I think there are multiple things that we can do with Simpson College and partnering with them that will help the downtown area. So been super happy to work with both Sue and Chelsea on this project of partnering with Simpson and having a much stronger relationship with them. And then also, I think something that's interesting that people forget about was how Indianola ranked as far as, especially in the seniors, are they, are they comfortable with the latest technologies that we use? Again, going back to marketing strategies coming out of our small businesses, do we need to change any of those things to make it more user-friendly for seniors? But most of them were actually pretty, pretty with it on the latest technology. So that was a bonus. Some of the highlights coming out of 25. Most of you heard about our Downtown Dough initiative. That brought in $59,450 in one day on August the 8th, and that went straight into our downtown businesses. Wine Witches and Brews and Home for the Holidays of this year proved to be two of our most successful events to date with many new visitors coming from outside the Indianola area. Four grant applications were submitted in 25 with two making it as finalists. Our annual dinner this year raised 20,000 that will be used for small business support resources, education, and future programs. We went to both workshops that were Iowa-based, the Iowa Downtown Conference and the Main Street America National Conference in Philadelphia. So had four great educational opportunities for myself and some board to take part in all of those. We achieved national accreditation through Main Street America. Our branding was complete with Main Street Iowa and our branding officer in April of 25. You probably noticed the two placemaking signs that were installed outside the courthouse. That was in part to our branding. Again, launching our Rise, Revive, and Thrive Indianola Main Street Matching Program, developed in 25, that will launch in 26. Responsible spending and transparency is helping us to achieve our balanced budget for 25. And our 501/25 day launch, some of our shop local initiatives and thus far has shown increased revenues as far as those go. So also what I gave all of you guys is our current budget worksheet. You can see where we were at in 24 and 25. This is an ongoing budget worksheet. This will be completed at the end of December. And then our proposed budgets for 26. It shows our private investments, our city investments, any other income that we had in 25. Some of the goals we had set looking into 26 and what has been accomplished thus far. So overall, this is being provided to you because I think transparency, first of all, is key. I think the investors should know where their money is going. I also think it's important to specify what investor dollars are being used for and what fundraising dollars are being used for specifically. But if you guys have any questions on the budget itself, I'm happy to answer any of those or on any of the other projections or ideas that we have going into 26.
Okay, questions?
I have gotten compliments on the placemaking signs, and that's from people who don't live here, too.
Good deal.
They're nice.
I was seeing all the pictures from Home for the Holidays, people taking their family comforts inside the Main Street. It's an addition.
So I was gonna say, I was at the Brass Armadillo a week ago, and the lady walked in and said she knew me. And I said, okay. And she said, we really enjoyed Home for the Holidays. So she brought, she came down here, I guess her daughter lives down here. They have two kids, grandkids. So they brought two other grandkids down, and there were about six of them on Round Square. So I thought that was pretty interesting, though.
What I'm noticing is using kind of those events as platforms. Just a couple of kind of fun stats on those for Wine Witches and Brews. This is kind of, you know, as far as the data goes, showing like who is coming in from outside Indianola. Because we, we really want to not only zone in on just our local community, but also bringing people into the district. So 62% of the ticket sales alone for Wine Witches and Brews were outside of the Indianola area. Home for the Holidays online marketing showed a reach of over 50,000 viewers. 52 of those were not regular Main Street followers. Again, no surprise that the majority were women between the ages of 35 and 44. And we had an increased interaction on all of our platforms during the week of Home for Holidays by 118%. So there's something about, you know, definitely Home for the Holidays that grabs people's attention. I think it's just that small-town feel. But out of the letters to Santa, which was done by the Mayor's Youth Council, 33% of those letters are actually going back to kids outside of the Indianola area, with I think the furthest one going out to Pennsylvania. So definitely saw an uptick in outside traffic for 25's Home for the Holidays. So I feel like we're gaining a lot of ground on bringing new people into the district. Some of the interesting things that I'm finding is, in comparison to some of the Main Street districts in our area, if you look at comparisons, as far as locally, only 20 to 30% are visiting our downtown on a weekly basis. On a monthly basis, we're at 40 to 55%, and that's just local. So whether they're coming down for service, shopping, eating, I think actually what puts us into a higher percentage there is because in comparison, we definitely have a larger number of food and beverage located within the district, which is putting us closer to that 55%. So overall, we're ranking higher in out-of-town shoppers, but lower in local. So I think that that shows us that as far as Main Street goes, we have a lot of work to do as far as local shopping goes or people coming to the downtown district. Some of the top reasons that people are hesitant to shop or have services done in local downtowns. Number one, no surprise here is going to be parking. Number two is the lack of one-stop shopping. That's always hard to accomplish when you have specialty boutiques. Business hours, that's gonna be lack of consistency and availability in online shopping. So definitely feeling like a community survey. I would like to do a community survey to be conducted for Indianola specific. Sometime in 2026, would love to work on community development or the city on this. I don't feel like the initial 24 survey that was done, I just felt like it just lacked, you know, any type of reliable information. It was based on 189 surveys out of the entire Indianola. So what I would like to do to get a little bit more specific data is try to figure out a way to do a more widespread community survey that's going to give us concerns, wants, what are some of the things that we can improve in the district just from the community standpoint? We've already surveyed the businesses themselves, and we'll follow up on the one-on-ones in January and February on what our business-specific needs are so that we can start addressing those. Our biggest shift from year one to year two is year one being structured, year two being small business support. So we shift gears pretty dramatically in January of 26. We move on to phase two.
Is there a way to include, or I don't know how possible this is, but to include Simpson students to see why they come downtown or down to this district or don't come down to the district? Would there be some things that we might be able to find a way, work with?
100%, and I know that Chelsea, who is on our board and working with, you know, she's head of community partnerships. That's definitely one thing that we want to do. Pulling Simpson students separately, I think is gonna be a big game changer. I think that's always been the question mark, is why are Simpson students not, you know, frequent to the downtown? And putting in initiatives that are Simpson student-specific. So we've started already putting into place, whether it be student discounts, Simpson nights at some of the local food and beverage places and things like that. Like, how do we meet their needs on what, you know, I would consider a pretty limited budget as a college student? So it's sort of, how do we meet different people on where they're at?
Exactly.
And whether it be community, whether it be students, whether it be locals, or whether it be out-of-town people, we're going to have to meet those needs, but it can't, I mean, to do it across the board all the same isn't gonna work.
Right.
Yep.
Any other questions for Main Street? Josh, you have any questions?
Good, it's a great job, thanks, Erica.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Congratulations on your national accreditation, too.
Thank you.
I'll switch you over just one second.
I'm Chrissy Relay. I haven't met many of you, so I wanted to introduce myself. I'm the new president and CEO for Indianola Chamber of Commerce. So Amanda and I are gonna do this together because you're gonna get a taste of what we did in 25, a little bit of what's coming in 26, and a little bit in between. She's gonna kick us off, yeah, with the beginning for 25 here.
Awesome, well, thanks, guys. It's three years ago that I came in here and, two weeks on the job, asked for you guys to trust the chamber to grow Experience Indianola to something we didn't think that it could possibly be at the time. And I just want to thank you guys for choosing to invest in the chamber at that point in time. We feel we've come a long way, and we've done that in partnership with the city. I don't think you guys probably get as much kudos as you should in what you guys do to make Indianola a better place to, well, I like to say, live, work, play, and stay. You know, we've got Dog Who Shows Up pounding big banners in the ground, Aaron shooting wild and crazy videos for us. Just so many ways that you guys have been incredible partners. So I just, before I do this, I just want to thank you guys. This is my last chamber duty is this evening. So just thank you guys so much. So we're gonna give you a quick update. I'm gonna fly through this. We thought it was really super important for you guys to have some visibility into what we're truly doing day in and day out with Experience Indianola, because it's a lot. So we have a lot of slides, but we're gonna fly through them because we want you guys to have some visibility and be able to actually see what it takes for us to operate this program. So we're gonna talk about our core CBB operations, our group operations, the strategic things that we're doing, take a quick look at some data, looking ahead to 2026, and then kind of have a discussion moving forward. So as far as our core CBB operations, let's call this what we're doing day in and day out. And the reality is, is that what we're doing is operating like a true visitor, Convention and Visitors Bureau. And we're representing just the entire community, the entire city, and the assets that we have, both from a visitor's standpoint and from a quality of life standpoint. So the attractions, you can see here, these are the attractions that we're regularly promoting. I think it's important to know that when, when we're talking about brand, as far as Experience Indianola is concerned, that brand is nothing without the brands of the incredible tourism partners that we have in this community. And so we are working day in and day out with our tourism partners to tell Indianola's story. We're leveraging content that we're building on their behalf. We're leveraging their content and truly like trying to tell the story, which, you know, our tagline, "The sky's the limit." We truly offer so much. And that's amazing because it makes us different and unique than other small towns. But it's also a challenge as a team to juggle the brands of like multiple attractions, experiences, businesses, et cetera. We're not, you know, Appella, where we're defined. You know, we have a few things that we promote. We truly do big things alongside having a small-town feel. Our business promotion outside of attractions, we're building in business stories in our content. We're highlighting it in storytelling through itineraries, through social media. We're doing event promotion. That's both from a standpoint of our big events, our staple events that we have, as well as our day-to-day events. We have through the chamber calendar, anyone who's hosting a tourism-related event can add that calendar and tag tourism-related event, and it is populating on Experience Indianola. We're promoting experiences, so that's where we're doing the storytelling about our outdoor adventure, our agritourism, our biking, our trails, all of, really all of the experiences that we have to offer. And we're doing that through, of course, our website, Experience Indianola. But a website is nothing unless you're drawing people to that website and providing content that keeps people engaged and interested. So our weekly event email is incredibly popular. We're sending that out, communicating to everybody what events are taking place in Indianola. That goes out every Monday. In addition, we do a weekly event social media post that gets a lot of interaction. We're doing daily social media content, whether that's through highlighting the content that we're creating, promoting our large events in the community, leveraging our partners. You can see a Main Street, a Main Street post there, or highlighting our businesses. We're constantly looking at, how do we keep that, that content fresh, continuous? And also being able to leverage as much as we can that's already created. And then we do a monthly newsletter as well. And then we also bring, let's see, oh, Miller's no sound. Darn it. It's, it's okay. Oh, is it going? I think it's important to note that that content, everything you saw on that slide was done by chamber staff. You know, we're not outsourcing a majority of the stuff, that anything that you see that's a reel, that's video. That's what we're doing. I mean, I'm chasing balloons. That was my ranger. You know, we're always looking for ways, how do we sell our community? And we do that through investing our own time and energy in selling that outside of going, you know, relying on professional resources to create that content. The other big piece of Experience Indianola operations that we work on is our group business. This takes a lot of time. You guys, I'm sure from last year, heard us talk about the tour groups coming in. We created and rolled out what is the Tours and Event Planning page on Experience Indianola. And one of the key reasons we did this is, you know, some of these tours and meeting planners can call and spend two hours on the phone with you, and that's hard when, you know, the chamber is such a small team. So we built these pages so that these meeting planners and tour planners can start creating their own itineraries, and then we will help them from there. We are doing group attraction. So in the month of October, we had four different large, like, events coming into Indianola. I think we had Simpson, people at Simpson three weeks out of October doing events. And those are coming to Indianola because our team, as well as, I know Warren County has helped bring an event in as well. We're putting together responses to requests for proposals, and we're actively selling our community to meeting planners. One of the groups that came into town, they actually, it's an association that runs, they basically play the role of executive director and meeting planner for associations all over the state. And they were very, very impressed with Indianola and are telling the other meeting planners, and I'm going to give the chamber a chance to do a pitch on why people should be coming to Indianola. This is an example of one of our proposals. We're pitching not just one-day experiences. If you can imagine, we get a lot of people coming over from the balloon classic saying, hey, we've got a tour group coming. What can you do to help them? The first thing I try to do is push multi-day itineraries, three days. We can keep people busy. I know it doesn't seem possible, but we have absolutely kept groups busy for three days, and they love it and they talk about it. We have groups coming back, bringing more people. The planning in addition is what we do. So our team is managing all of these details. We're coordinating with all of our businesses and our venues and the experiences that we're creating. We're working with our partners on where they're at with pricing, and we're putting these whole packages together. And we're running a lot of the details on the planning side, and then we're operating it. So our team is actively running around when we have these events come in, running around, making sure everything's set up, making sure the lunches arrive. And we are doing that in partnership with our partners, our business community, our partner community. We're doing opera performances and honey tastings at the Des Moines Metro Opera catered by local businesses. We're going to Simpson College for meetings. We're doing cold inflates. We're promoting the National Balloon Classic and all of the assets that we have. And because of that, it is a growing space. When I came here, this is how many tours and meetings the chamber was operating.
Zero.
None. And now we have a lot. And it matters because that is direct spending into our community. We can quantify over $100,000 that has been spent because we were the, basically, the middleman in invoicing, getting invoices from the businesses and sending the invoices to the tour groups. So we can account for $100,000. When we use figures that they say to estimate the total visitor spending, it's anywhere from $150,000 to $250,000. Pratesh will tell you that October was good for meetings. They fall in a sweet spot for him, the meetings that we're doing, because they're in the middle of the week when normally he's struggling to have as many rooms filled. And so we've been filling that sweet spot. So, and this is an actual quote from a participant I heard him saying as they were walking into the opera. Experience Indianola Strategic Operations, this is where we're making decisions based on what's going on in our community, what our priorities are for our community. We're working with our partners to decide where we want to spend money. These are the true, like, marketing placements and the things that are getting the visibility that are out there. So we're leveraging trends and we're leveraging partnerships. This year was a big year of collaboration, working alongside Wander Warren County, which is run by Warren County Economic Development, the National Balloon Classic, and even our county partners. This is the Up, Up &amp; Getaway campaign that we did. This is a Travel Iowa Cooperative campaign where we had digital billboards, displays, ads. I think we were on Spotify, streaming audio, streaming video, you name it. It was a huge campaign. Our team spent a ton of time. We had Erin as well helping us a little bit on the video side. And this campaign ended up getting two and a half million impressions. So this is the power of collaboration, the power of partnerships. This particular campaign was focused outside of Iowa. Travel Iowa is very focused on how do we get those surrounding states, those bordering states, to come to Iowa? Our number one, and this ranked more than Des Moines, our number one was Chicago. 822,000 people paid attention to Indianola through this campaign. We think it's pretty awesome.
Need this feed from every day.
Here's the video.
Up, Up &amp; Getaway to Indianola, Iowa. So launch your adventure today.
And that particular campaign, we had Experience Indianola, Wander Warren County, and National Balloon Classic-themed campaigns. I'm showing you Experience Indianola, but all of them were leveraged. In addition, we did a digital passport this year in partnership with Wander Warren County. This is a passport that is leveraged to encourage people to travel and wander. As people download the passport, they can check in in different places and earn points for exploring. And we had Experience Indianola flights, bites, and sights. We had a Wander Warren County, and we had a Family Fun Pass. We created a collaborative landing page for these events. So if you can imagine, when you're doing collabs, you've got to have them land somewhere. And of course, you don't want to pick one over the other. So we created iowagetaway.com. Believe it or not, the URL was available. I couldn't believe it. So iowagetaway.com is where people could land and get the passport, as well as click out to any of our partners and join Norwalk, join in on that. And then we had a number of itineraries that people could click through. Our influencer campaign, we did one through Travel Iowa with Travel with Breezy. 51,000 total impressions and 2,400 engagements and some pretty incredible comments coming through on that. We did partner promos. This is just a few examples. Simpson College, we are actively going to Simpson College. One, we're providing stuff for their packets, but we're also going through during their SOAR events. And we are promoting to the students verbally and talking about all the things that there are to do in the area. We do the same thing with DMOM. When their company comes in, in June, we are going and welcoming them to Indianola and telling them everything that there is to do. We're also advertising through any event guide or print publication. And so we're not just looking at how do we place outside, but how do we also take the people who are either coming here for events or coming here as temporary residents and getting them engaged in our community? In addition, we have run commercials both through Simpson College Jumbotron's, and we also are live-streaming during all of their main sporting events. And then Disc Golf Pro Challenge or Pro Tour Challenge on the Disc Golf Network, we had this commercial running. Agritourism is a huge, growing trend. And Travel Iowa's main agritourism marketing initiative is through Evolution of the Heartland, and we invested in this this year. This was our print advertising. We actually were on the cover with Bachner Farms. And then it was this cool road trip. You can maybe see a little bit of that where there's a map, and we were a highlighted community on Evolution of the Heartland. So to look at some data, we are seeing some great traction with Experience Indianola. This is the website itself. We have 33,000 active users, and our engagement rate is about 56%. So this is a growing area for us. And then our social media, we had a reach of 680,000. What I really like about what's going on in Experience Indianola is that the engagement by non-followers is 70%. And what that tells me is that the people who are watching these campaigns that are not our followers are landing on our page and they're paying attention. And hopefully, eventually, they follow. But those hits that are coming here are non-followers. So it means our campaigns are working. I also include the chamber's reach because we are promoting Experience Indianola content through the chamber, where we had a reach of 1.8 million this year and have over 5,200. Three years ago, we were at about 3,000 followers, so that's increased significantly as well. And then our visitor traffic. I've got, oh, yes, please.
Could you explain the difference between like engagement and clicks and reach? Is there a big difference? Because like, one, you had like, what, 2.5 engagements?
That was like up, up and away.
What's an engagement?
Oh, 2.5 million.
Yes.
Impressions. So that means it's coming along, and that would be reach, too. Reach is impression. Sorry, it's, we had one thing from last year defined, and then Travel Iowa named it something different. But reach would be those impressions, so that's coming across. Engagement means they're interacting with the content. And so you might, and Pratesh, I don't know if you want to speak to it.
Likes or comments or actively does something with the post, it's an engagement.
If they click on it, so like, if they're stopping and they're watching a video versus if they're clicking on a video, they're clicking on the video to watch it, that's an engagement.
Reach is just, it showed up.
Showed up on our feed.
To them.
We got some, we get data every year from Greater Des Moines Partnership. It's Placer AI. This is an August to July figure, and we look year over year. And we had a 62,000 year-over-year visitor traffic increase here to Indianola. We can't claim that all ourselves, but we look at that data to see what's happening with the trends. What I found interesting in this is that that's not, you know, this was from August. And so RagBri technically fell in the year before. So I think if we were to really, truly look at, you know, taking out an anomaly like that, we'd probably be north of 70,000 in our visitor increase. Now I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Christie.
So looking ahead to '26, I think the key things that we are, you know, looking forward to, taking everything that she's just talked about that we're currently doing, adding some to it, depending on funding, Experience Indianola operations. So a lot of what you saw is, you know, it's website management. You were paying for security hosting, ads, all those things. Keeping content and attractions, events up to date as far as where to stay, where to eat, anything that's going on and sharing that. It is time, money, and resources. So, and building out more itineraries. So I spent some time on Travel Iowa. One of the trending things right now is how to spend 48 hours in, and it'll be Keyakuck, you know, or Cedar Rapids. But that's what's trending. So it aligns with what our goals are for '26, which is to really enforce that overnight stay. So building out those itineraries, including, you know, those two-day, maybe even the extended stay, make it a full weekend stays. Ongoing marketing and social media management, pretty obvious. You can see some of the stuff that we've been working on, you know, pulling content from other people, creating our own, having the videos made, continuing on with that. Coordination with Travel Iowa, Catch Des Moines, local tourism partners. So those are going to be your city meeting planners, things like that, and other channels. So just, again, like she was talking about, the tour groups that are coming in. So having more of trying to capture some of those groups to come to Indianola. Visitor Partner Services, staff and time. Again, once Amanda's gone, we're back to a staff of two. So we definitely need an additional person that can help with some of this. As we're continuing to have more stuff come to Indianola, it just continues. More events requires more pushing, more, more sharing. So anyway, we will need to increase staff there. Let's see, support, oh, tour groups, that is a huge, we spend a lot of time with the tour groups. So when they come to town, it's, like she said, we're running to make sure food showed up, the cold inflates going how it's supposed to. If we need to fill in gaps, adjust something, we're on the go. So, and then promoting group planners, so getting more of those focused towards like local things versus Travel Iowa that was looking outside of the state. We want to look more towards bringing people from, you know, locally Des Moines area, bringing it, you know, out to Decorah, some of these other places that are still within Iowa, but it's not too far away, but they might want to stay the night when they come out here. So those group planners, you're talking businesses that are downtown, business retreats where they might come for a one-night stay and getting them to our venues to host some of those retreats. So looking more locally this year, taking some of that SEO that we got from what we've been doing and seeing how we can plug that into demographics locally, not just on a wider scale.
Question for you.
Yes.
Said you needed another staff. Have you considered an intern from Simpson?
We do use interns, yep. Which is great because they're there during some of our busiest time of the year. But still, the amount of hours that an individual person that the chamber's putting in is beyond what should be. We definitely need another person.
And I think, too, the challenge, and I'll just speak frankly, like, we've loved our Simpson interns, but sometimes the brand level, you know, there's that growing phase. And we have not had like the person who can do the true Experience Indianola-level brand without a lot of oversight and tweaking and all of that. And that can be, so sometimes when we have a Simpson intern, it's more in an operational role than a marketing role because we'll end up having to redo things.
In teaching.
To align with our brand, and that takes as much time as it would if we did the work ourselves. So we rely a lot on the operational side of Simpson interns, and we've had great ones.
I started the chamber in '23 in a small capacity, and we have always had interns every year. That was, you know, in '23, '24, '25. So sometimes more than one. It's definitely something that we do utilize, and it is beneficial, but we definitely need more staff, more talent.
Thank you.
Yep. So then going on to driving overnight stays, this is, again, one of our big pushes for '26. We've been doing this, but we want to look at more like event plus hotel packages. So people call for the classic, maybe we're telling them, here's this package, it includes a night stay. So partnering with other groups to try and, how do we push this and make this more of a longer destination, whether it's a week, a few days, the weekdays, things like that. The partner push, again, there's more than just balloons, you know. Obviously, you saw, maybe it's Home for the Holidays. We're partnering with Main Street. Amanda, you know, saying, it looks like a Hallmark show, right? So plugging into, okay, can we bring in some sort of brunch in the morning? How do we make this come stay the night, have this Hallmark, you know, Christmas experience with your families and your loved ones? So just thinking outside the box, facilitating those conversations between, you know, restaurants, store owners, things like that. The overnight Target market. So again, we're just using what's already here, the opera, you know, things, reasons are already coming here. are already coming here, plugging into that and putting something together for everybody to utilize. The shoulder season initiatives. So first of all, when we have.
Can I stop you for a second?
Yeah.
You've got about five more minutes. We've been giving everybody about 25 minutes or so here. So we've got two or three other things to go, so just, just an FYI.
Okay. I'll speed through this. The shoulder season initiatives, so just going beyond just those peak things, but looking to how do we get people here in the off seasons too? I brought in here Pella's Tourism. One thing that we really need is a visitor center. Somehow people find our office, there's no signage, there's no visibility, but they wander in anyways. We get, we have a high demand for people that are wanting printed information. They're wanting brochures, they're wanting booklets, all that stuff costs money. We don't have the funding for that currently. So we're trying to use the QR codes, getting them to go online, but you would be amazed how many people are coming in and actually wanting something tangible to take with them to look at, you know, and maybe consider to come back later. So anyway, just pulling from Pella to look at ways that we can bring that here to Indianola.
Do you want to speak to this?
Yeah, you can.
Okay. So, oh, it kind of did something wonky. So sorry for the lower hand. But on the left-hand side is just what it looked like for what we did in 2025. And then we did some even above and beyond that. To the right is what we've committed for next year. So there is a challenge in the tourism world where when you want to commit to campaigns and initiatives, you have to lock in by July the year before. And I think this is why you've kind of seen with Catch Des Moines, they have that 18-month cycle of, of, you know, contract cancellation. It's because you have to lock in six months before that fiscal year even, or that calendar year even starts. And so with the uncertainty of funding this next year, we have not been able to lock in and commit yet for things above and beyond what we're feeling comfortable with. And so it's kind of creating that, that question standpoint. And what the chamber has been discussing, and we've had a meeting with Jake and the crew, is really based on the operations that we're doing and in order to leverage what we're doing the best, we think that rolling that Catch Des Moines type of 28E agreement, only a better one, and rolling that over to Experience Indianola and how we're operating that, and establishing the chamber as a true convention and visitors bureau, because that is the work that we are doing. When you look at other communities that have CVBs, their communities are funding their chambers as CVBs. And the benefit to that is that one, we're not only able to commit to opportunities sooner, we're able to leverage the funding. So when we pursue grants like on Travel Iowa and other grant opportunities, if you don't have the funding secured yet to be able to leverage it, then a lot of times you don't get the grants if you don't have the funding. They like to award projects or award grants to those who have funding. And so this is what the chamber for 2026 moving forward would love to work with the city on establishing a 28E agreement, of course, establishing metrics on how that would be evaluated, have that look very different, be able to work collectively with you guys on, on strategies and big picture things. And, you know, we've been doing the work, so let's make it official. Questions?
You know, three years ago, Amanda, when you came in and we started, you started working on the Engage Indianola website. So have you seen a substantial increase year to year over clicks and engagement there?
Oh, yes. Yes. Significantly. Yep. Yeah, I mean, we're, and I think that's important to note that we're just getting started. So the numbers you're seeing now is from a fresh new brand. I mean, we're two years old, so we're just getting started. I think to step back on Experience Indianola now, you lose all that momentum and steam. We're finally on the map. I mean, we're talking about metrics here, but people are talking about us as a destination outside of our events. People are talking about coming here, spending their weekends here, exploring agritourism, outdoor adventure, all of those things. And so I think it's really important with all that's been invested at this point in time, and we just see everything increasing. I think now is the time to, to continue to capitalize on that and grow, grow us into, you know, ultimately being that next Pella, that next winner set, all of whom we're partnering with as well, so.
I think it would be interesting to see some of those trends from beginning to where we are now.
Yeah.
If, if that's something you have available.
Yeah, we have all that data. Something that's interesting is I saw Catch Des Moines page from back when she was here the first time, there were two things to do in Indianola. And that's, and you're paying the money. So even now, we're going to Catch Des Moines and putting the events in manually ourselves. They're not doing it, we are. So there's a lot of things that we're doing to keep this running like a machine that without that, there's just nothing, they're not even doing it, so.
Amanda, could I quickly?
Yes.
Just two seconds. I just think it's important to remember that hotels pay a special tax on top of sales tax. And by law, that tax is required to basically fund things that drive hotel nights. And I think historically back in 2022, when we started this conversation, I don't think we were being good stewards of that hotel tax. Like you pay gas tax to fund the roads, you pay tax on airline tickets to fund security and all the stuff that airports do. The hotel motel tax is for tourism and we just never were using it for tourism. We were outsourcing it to Des Moines and they were using our money to promote their things. This is amazing. Like if, if you would have asked me three years ago what we could have done, I would have just wanted a website, right? Let alone bring in tours, bring in groups, do all the collaborations, doing ad spend. So like if we're, if we're talking about like being a good steward of hotel motel tax, not general tax, not trying to take away tax from like the police or the firemen, but like tax that's supposed to be used to drive tourism. I mean, this is like, I would put this up to any event or any campaign that any city has done in this amount of time. Like this is just beyond. So I would, I would challenge anybody to find another community that's done more in three years.
Good point. Almost. Any other questions? Gosh, do you have anything? I'm good. Thank you. Yep. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
It's been great to see the progress.
Good luck, ladies. Good luck.
While he's getting her set up, I was going to mention one thing. I was at the National League of Cities Summit installing the week before Thanksgiving. I try to make sure I sit with different people, meals and everything along that line. This is kind of for both Main Street and the chamber, but I sat in with a group of folks from Tuskegee, Alabama, and we got to talking about stuff and the name George Washington Carver came up. And so I started going into all the things that, you know, that we went to Simpson College here in our community and all these kinds of things. And they didn't realize that we actually did a George Washington Carver Day here in Indianola. So just back in the back of your minds, it might be something to kind of, I don't know how you plug in automatically Tuskegee, Alabama, but you know, somewhere along that line, find some way to, to kind of flood some of that area a little bit during the early part of the next year and might get some more folks up here with different things. But that was kind of an interesting conversation we had.
And we pushed the museum too. We have Ella Dabstedt do the tour there and she's awesome.
Right. So just a, just a, it was just an interesting conversation, so.
Cool.
All right. I will try to blow through mine, I promise. Ray Togoken, Warren County Economic Development. Thanks for having me here tonight. And we're just going to kind of run through you know us, me, I'm fortunate to have Haley Swanson. I know this might be confusing. Haley works for the Indianola Chamber, but I am fortunate to be able to have her one day a week. And she is helping me tremendously, so very excited about that. All of the work that you're about to hear about is made possible by the investors of Warren County Economic Development. We are a public-private partnership, so you'll see public investors that choose, like yourselves, to invest in the work that we do along with private investors. So I have in front of you this very long, lots of words documents. We're going to try to break it down in this PowerPoint, but this is a very good summary of the work that is done on an annual basis by Warren County Economic Development. So some of the things that we're just kind of doing on the day-to-day, our, our role is to recruit business to Warren County and to also help the existing businesses that we have, whether that's helping new businesses start up or those existing businesses. So we're always looking for resources, whether it's just compiling a list of resources that are out there to help businesses grow and thrive, or whether that means partnering with local organizations to make them available to our businesses. We also work on business recruiting. I think I already mentioned that, but as part of that, we keep an inventory of available property on our website. And then we respond to prospect leads occasionally from the Greater Des Moines Partnership. We'll get some large industrial leads that sometimes we are fortunate to be able to respond to and other times we don't quite have the, the building or the property that the, the company is specifically looking for. But that is definitely something in our wheelhouse to always be identifying additional places where to put a business. We also do some grant writing. This year was a, a good year for us. We were able to write $210,000 in tourism, not tourism, but in grant funding. So 200 through the Iowa CDBG grant program. This is not as exciting for you guys, but I am a firm believer in good things that happen around the, around the county are good for every community. So we wrote a $100,000 grant for a building in Carlisle and another one for a building in Milo. Ironically, the building in Milo is owned by a downtown business owner here in Indianola. It all just kind of spreads around and rising ship or rising tide lifts all boats. And then of course, working with our community partners, there's been a variety of things that I know Main Street, Chamber and us have been able to work on together. Every year we host an annual business breakfast. Huge thanks to Doug Byland and the City of Indianola for rescuing us in our 30 minutes before the event weather situation where we moved it from the balloon classic. Typically that is something that we would hold out at the sponsor building, kind of the promotion with the National Balloon Classic. But Doug Byland rescued us again for the second year in a row. We were able to move it to the Activity Center. Speaking of partnerships earlier and creating business resources, we had the opportunity to host this Journey to Your Vision Business Workshop. It was something that is available to any business in really a regional area. They estimated that the value of that was about $350. It was free for businesses to attend. That was made possible because of partnerships. Indianola Main Street, all three chambers of commerce in Warren County and Warren County Economic Development all worked together to help promote that, get people to it. And then we just shared the cost of providing refreshments and lunch. And then Amanda mentioned earlier, but I also, I have to give kudos to the Indianola Chamber. In all of those amazing bids that they have been submitting, we were able to model after that to submit a bid to host the Iowa Leadership Exchange, which is a conference for individuals that have leadership programming in their city, county, maybe even in a business. But we were fortunate to be able to host that here at Simpson in Indianola. And I just wanted to highlight what that really means. So for our room block, just for the Leadership Exchange also, this is in the month of October. Remember earlier we were talking about how those can be slow times for our hotels? Happy to say that we had at, at least 35 rooms booked for that conference. We had around 100 attendees from across the state and we were able to get, I served on the, the conference planning committee, so I was able to help get more things locally on the table. So Cynica Wall with your clear next up was our keynote speaker for the event. Mayor came and spoke and gave a welcome. Thank you for that. But you can see here, other local businesses that were affected by just this one single conference.
Can I tell you one more thing?
Yes, please.
So we were down in Corning, my wife and I, about a week and a half ago, walked into a, which by the way, Corning is the Main Street community as well, and it was kind of interesting to see some of the differences and things they're doing there. But the point is I walked into an antique store down in Corning and the lady looks at me and she goes, "Were you from Indianola?" Another one of those things. And I said, "Oh, yes." And she goes, "Well, I was at that Leadership Exchange. You guys have a great community." So I thought that was really, really good.
Great news. Yeah, it's probably hard to tell, but in that top right picture, that is the mayor speaking. Oh, that's him on the top left too.
Oh, geez. Got me twice. Yeah, there we go.
Right? Yes. Okay. All right, let's move on to business programs. So we talked about how we want to help our existing businesses thrive. This is just kind of a quick rundown of some of the programs that we have created in-house to help with that mission. So our annual Warren County Small Business Grant Contest, top right shows you since, this year was our 10th anniversary of having that grant contest. It's kind of morphed over the years, but it's a big milestone for us. So we have given total across Warren County, 135,000 in small business grants. Of that 135, 114,000 of it has gone to Indianola businesses. It's a big deal. Then just this year alone, I mentioned that the grant contest has morphed over the years. It used to be that we just gave two cash prizes, one startup and one existing every year. Now we give a first, second and third place in those two categories. So this year, we bumped up our total giving to 20,000. Of that 20,000, 16,500 went directly to Indianola businesses.
What do they use that money?
Picture their happy faces?
Yes. What do they use the money for generally?
It is a variety of things. It cannot be for ongoing operational expenses. So we're really looking for businesses that they just need a small injection of cash to either obtain a new piece of equipment that's going to help them increase their sales or production capabilities, something along those lines. Maybe they need software, in some cases, training. We also manage a county-wide revolving loan fund. This is meant to be gap financing for small to medium-sized businesses. Typically, we're making loans between 5 and 25,000. In special situations, we've gone up to 50,000. So far, since we've had this program, 85,000 has been utilized by Indianola businesses. Some additional business resources that are in the wheelhouse, we are working on building a development fund. You'll learn about the philanthropic partnership here in a moment, but kind of modeling after that where you, you have a pot of money that can become a sustainable source, where it's accruing interest, that sort of thing, where essentially it's a sustainable source where we can use it for things like our grant contest or if significant economic development projects come along, we have this fund that we can pull from to help push those over. We also have a veteran-owned business grant program. This was established when we first became a home base Iowa county. To date, we've given 9,000 in veteran-owned grants. We also have a commercial paint grant. This was a partnership with McCoy True Value where businesses can get up to five gallons of repaint to help with any of their beautification efforts. The idea is that they are beautifying their facades, they can use it for interior if needed, but the hope is that we're beautifying our businesses as well. And then when it relates to other programming that we do, that I, I see it more how it's giving back to the community. We have a Warren County Gift Certificate Program. They're available in any denomination. I'm sorry, I'm really trying to go fast. Redeemable at any Warren County business and to date, we've kept 48,000 local. Our Warren County Leadership Institute, there's something weird happening up top. Let me draw your attention to the air on my page as my eye is catching it as well. Every year we have an annual Leadership Institute. Since we started the program in basically as old as the organization is, 1993, '94 was our first class. We have graduated 538 people from the Leadership Institute. I think we have some alumni and board members here in the room, but just in 2025, we had 22 people graduate from the Leadership Institute. Their class, every year they do a class project. This year, the class raised $11,000 to put little free libraries across Warren County. They were able to install 16 libraries and two of them were in the Indianola area. They were able to install 16 libraries and two of them were in the Indianola area. Oh, let's see. Oh, the messed up number at the top is five year totals on class projects. Collectively, over the last five years, leadership classes have raised $111. $111,000.
That's what the K is there for, right?
$111.50 is not that impressive. That's the K. Tourism, I won't go too deep into because Amanda did an amazing job talking about all the things we've been doing. But the power of partnerships, I cannot say it enough. This $10,000 Iowa Tourism Grant, that was a partnership between the Indianola Chamber and Warren County Economic Development. So that's $10,000 that was added to our collective tourism efforts. And then locally, the project total was 16,600. So we each committed to an additional 3,300. Travel Iowa Co-op Advertising, Amanda did talk about, but that is something that was split three ways. These are all things that, especially the co-op advertising campaign, any one of our individual organizations would not be able, would likely not be able to afford to do that individually. So cost sharing and partnering with others makes it more attainable and helps us get our name out there without totally breaking the bank. And then I wanted to mention that we have, our countywide tourism efforts are all on wanderwarrencounty.com. Various things, events, things to do, itineraries, that sort of information. Warren County Hometown Pride, this was an initiative, I'm sure you all remember it, but it started with a five-year initiative where we had a community coach. We no longer have the coach. So what we are doing at Warren County Economic Development is just kind of helping be the glue annually to get these groups that are still established across the county. In fact, because of the good work that these hometown pride groups have been doing around the county, it has spurred an additional community to join on, Spring Hill. So that's exciting. But we'll be getting them together annually just to kind of share war stories, trade resources, that sort of thing. Because the goal is, we made a significant investment upfront to help these committees establish and do good for their communities. We would really like to see them carry that torch forward long into the future. And then lastly, Warren County Philanthropic Partnership. This is our annual grant making for nonprofit entities. 501(c)(3)'s and 170(b) units of government, which is. In 2025, we were able to give $103,620 to Indianola area nonprofits, which includes some of your departments. 15, so we had 22 grant applications that we were able to fund this year. 15 of those were Indianola related. Additionally, typically we would give one $25,000 high impact grant. This year was kind of a unique year where we had a, a fun little leftover amount of money that came from a collaborative of things, where we were able to take that money and also draw down a little from our overall county endowment to make a second $25,000 grant. So we gave $50,000 in high impact grants, both of those to Indianola entities, National Bloom Classic, Warren County Fair. And then out of the 110,000 that we typically have available to give each year, 53,000 went to those other community grants to Indianola specific. That's philanthropic partnership. I don't really like that slide. Okay, and I think that is all I have. That was 15 minutes.
On the small business loans, interest-free loans?
It depends on the project, so it's going to depend on risk, how much they're asking for and what kind of term they're needing. We have done a 0%. Typically, they're like 3% to 5%.
Thank you.
I just want to put out there that the Warren County Leadership Institute deadline is midnight tonight.
Yes, thank you.
I don't know that we have anyone from the city that has applied yet.
I don't think so.
We wanted to have two. That was our goal.
We're looking at you Jake.
I think I'm more of a year two.
Okay, okay.
Yes. If anyone's interested, we had, like I said, we had the goal of two. Your interested deadlines midnight.
Since we're talking about upcoming deadlines, philanthropic partnership, the grant application to that is opening January 12th. So be thinking about what you have within your departments that might be grant eligible. Grants begin March 2nd. So you have a little. Any other questions?
We're good. I just want to say, go ahead. No, no, go, go.
I just want to say thank you.
Yeah, I was going to say thank you to every, all three of you, working together, obviously walking in the office up there. It's, it's, you're very collaborative and you're doing great work for the city of Indianola as well as the county. And certainly appreciate that.
Your work is very evident.
Planted the grow Warren out, and on the podium, wasn't me.
I think one thing that to keep in mind too is that what I can get from this council in the past is a very return on investment conscious. So you know, the, the dollars and things that you can show that how we're returning that investment is very critical. And the slides you had here are very critical as well, so I want to keep in mind. Thank you. Okay.
Anybody need a quick stretch?
I think we're okay. If less than anybody needs a break.
Need a drink of water there, Mayor?
I got, down the wrong pipe here. Thank you.
All right. Good evening. Jason Holder, Chief Innovation and Internal Services. What we're going to talk about tonight is the Energy Efficient Block Grant. We're going to discuss the final steps that are going to be required to, to move this grant forward. So let's just go jump right into the numbers. Earlier this year, the city of Indianola was awarded an $86,518 federal grant for the purpose of installing electronic vehicle, or electric vehicle chargers on the city, on the square, mostly on the south and west parking lots. It's a, a lot of great work put into it by our Sustainability Committee. And luckily, we have one of the members here tonight, Bill's here tonight. So thank you for all the hard work on this, on this grant, Bill. The scope of the project, obviously like I said, was brought in by the Sustainability Committee, is designed to put in two Level 2 charging stations in both those parking lots. Part of this grant is made really ready by all the work that we've done before with the Streetscape Project. That actually put a lot of the base infrastructure in that we were going to need, a lot of the conduit and things like that. But we still need to, there's still a lot more that needs to be done to make these, these, these parking spots available for EV chargers. So as you can see, the project is fully funded. The $86,518, $81 does cover the costs of that, the, the contract, the, the quote that we received for the, the putting in of the other equipment. But it does, there's some, there's some things that would need to be kind of spelled out in this, in this amount of money. $83,081 is allocated for the equipment, including all the chargers, the equipment from IMU. One thing that is not included in that is $3,500 of that grant must be used for administration costs. If we want to utilize that other $3,500 for anything other than administration costs, we would have to actually go back to the Iowa, the utility, the IEDA and ask for a waiver or, or get them to change that, which is probably pretty, pretty difficult. One thing I want to point out here, with the quote and with all the costs, this leaves us with a contingency fee of 80, of just under 80, or just over $84. So if we were to have any type of issue with this grant, something costs a little bit more, anything that, any money outside of that $84 would have to come from our general fund. It's, it can't be spent on anything else. Moving on. So the operational reality, the break even analysis for the first year. So when you look at what it costs to operate and maintain these chargers, luckily, a lot of the grant covers the first five years of the software and maintenance fees. So we don't have those for the first five years. Looking at the typical usage rates based on some of the other outlined areas that use these, we would need to basically maintain a 10 kilowatt daily average. And I can get into what, what that, I've learned way too much about chargers over the last two weeks. So forgive me if some of this is still boiling around in my brain. We would, to, to maintain that break even point of that 10 kilowatts, we basically need somebody attached to one of those chargers for 1.5 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. That, that gives us the break even point so that this, this doesn't cost the city any money at all. Obviously, if we can get more than that kilowatt average, we, we start to gain a little bit of money. If we get the 20 kilowatt average, that gives us about a $2,000 a year gain over that. And that's of course, really sustainable for that first five years, where we don't have to pay for the software or the warranty. After that, to, to get to that break even analysis, after the five years, we'll need somebody attached to those chargers almost 10 hours a day. So it, it really does create quite a, a little bit of a need there. Any questions on that slide? I'll just keep moving.
I got a question, Jason.
Can you repeat what you just said, 10 hours a day?
9.4 hours a day at current rates is what we would need to be able to break even once. That's 2031 and on. So up to 2031, we don't have to pay for these software maintenance fees. But after that, that becomes our responsibility and that's about $5,000 a year. So then that adds $5,000 to our already $576 a year bill. And then moving forward, that's, that's where you would need that 9.4 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. Obviously, if you have more than that going on at one time, that reduces the, the amount I need. But just, just on an average, that's what it would be.
Do you feel like, like we'll be able to sustain an hour and a half per day for the first five years? I don't know, maybe Bill and Sustainability Committee has done any type of research to determine if our community is able to sustain that?
One of the concerns that is out there is there are only 531 registered EV vehicles in the Warren County. With a, with a Level 2 charger, so maybe that, let's just talk about what these chargers different is. Level 1 charger is the kind of charger that you just normally get when you buy an EV vehicle and you plug it into your wall at home and then you plug the charger into your car and it trickle charges and it takes, you know, 28 hours for you to get a halfway charge. A Level 2 charger is what most people who buy EVs do put into their homes and it delivers approximately 7.2 kilowatts per hour. So it's not, these aren't the fast DC chargers that you see at like, you know, Quick Star or some of the other places around where Tesla or somebody can pull in and charge up in about 20 minutes. The goal behind this kind of charger is, is you want to make these kind of a destination charger. So people who live inside Indianola probably are not going to charge their vehicle up in their garage, come to downtown and plug in at 30 cents a minute when they're charging at home for, you know, 8, 15 cents a kilowatt hour, I mean. So what the goal for these kind of chargers would be, would be somebody who is coming either from outskirts of town and coming into town to shop at the square and enjoy our amenities that we have. And they would plug in and charge. A Level 2 charger probably produces, depending on your vehicle, and it, manufacturers are different, but the average is between 25 miles and 40 miles per hour of charge. So if I, for example, drove down from Des Moines and was going to go hang out on the square for an hour, I would gain probably, I'm on our vehicle, probably 25, if I was there for an hour, charging for an hour, I'd gain about 25 miles of range. So 82, Level 2 chargers are great for destinations, but not, that's not a place where you'd go and like refill. You know, you want to go to a, a supercharger or something like that for that. But they do provide great destination type charging ability. Does that answer?
It does, thank you.
And then to that point, and I, I know about that much of this, but my son has a Tesla, so I, I live it through him. We would be listed then, so like I know, he, he just plugs it in and it tells him where.
Not on Tesla. Charge, we, the, 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 the devices that we're looking at, and I'll just jump to that next slide, are fantastic devices. They're called OmniPort Charge, they're ChargePoint CP6000. They, they have what's called an OmniPort charger, which is great because it works for both standards, the J1775.
And 72.
72, yeah, thank you. And the NACS charging platform, which is the Tesla charger.
Okay.
So ChargePoint is not part of the supercharger network.
Right.
But there's, there's so many apps out there that if you have an EV, you probably have all the apps and you're like, where's a charger nearby?
It'd be on there.
Yeah, and it would most likely be on there.
That's the question, right.
It would be, it wouldn't be, you know, a fast charger that he's used to using. But it would be a place where he could park and top off, if you will, you know, or just make sure that he has a little extra for going home with. Absolutely. So that's, you know, that's, that is the, the preferred charger that we would like to use, mostly because it's also future proof. It does provide that, that multiple standards. You know, EVs and like, like computers and like everything, we don't know what the standard's going to be five years from now. But it's probably going to be one of these two and it's probably actually going to be NACS, which is the Tesla standard. It seems to be, you know, it's, it's kind of the VHS and the other one's kind of the beta. If that resonates with anybody. Or the DVD and the Blu-ray or something anyway. So the other advantage to this right now is like we said, there is that five-year no, no worry package. But once again, after that five years, it, it, we do have to figure out a way to actually make, have these make some money.
I'm going to just kind of point something out in, in some discussions, and I know Bill and I and some of the Sustainability Committees had various discussions off and on and various, whether it's meeting up, I mean, running into each other coffee or whatever. But one of the things that, to you, to Bob's point a little bit too, is that some of the discussion was about, you know, I, I read an article in the New York Times about a gentleman that was in Michigan trying to get his daughter to the University of Kansas down in Manhattan, Kansas. And he was mapping out for her where all of the charging stations were and how long she'd have to spend in that particular community to be charged enough to go to the next one. So those are the kinds of things that we're looking at. But we had the discussion tonight about how much we involve Simpson and Simpson students. You know, a lot of the parents come down for different activities those kids are involved in. And if they do have an EV vehicle, it'd be easy for them to park on the square. We just need to make that known, you know, to the college or anybody else and whatever. But make it, make it known that those would be available to those folks.
Yeah, absolutely.
And if you charge, let's say they, they're there and they charge for five hours because they're at a football game or whatever the case is. You know, now your hour and a half has been spread into that next one.
Yeah, absolutely. Then, that would be something that we would try to maybe even work with our, our partners to try to advertise that as, you know, as a, as a way to get more in there. And now, and a lot of this is based on, on some of the costs you can see. And in this slide, you can tell that where, where we would lie in some of the costs, you know, a home charger that most people have in their house is a Level 2 charger in the home. They pay the, the base IMU rate, which is around 13 to 15 cents a kilowatt hour, based on demand. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of factors that go into what you, what you pay there. Another typical cost is like if you go to the Des Moines parking garages, they're 16 cents per kilowatt hour on their Level 2 chargers, but you also have to pay for the parking spot too. So that's how they, they double get you there. We're suggesting a, a rate of between 30 and 33 cents a kilowatt hour. That's, that keeps us below the Midwest average, looking around the different Midwest. You know, that, that includes a lot of like your, like Charles Gabus Ford who has Level 2 chargers that they, they, they sell electricity to, I believe. I don't know what our local dealer has in those two, but, and then as far as all the way up to like, all the way over to the University of Iowa, they charge 43 cents per kilowatt hour.
You were saying that the Level 2 chargers get about seven kilowatts an hour charged on the car?
7.2, yeah, that's the max they can deliver.
Running about $2.10, $2.30 an hour is really.
These Level 2 chargers that are going to be installed are 19.2 kilowatt an hour. Kilowatt are the highest AC Level 2 charger available.
Okay.
They're putting out 19, so you can add an average EV and average equivalent miles per hour, which is kilowatt per hour.
Yeah.
Average is three, so you figure that, you're going to add 55 to 60 miles range in an hour of time.
Okay, good.
Hey, I didn't, that wasn't, 19.2 was not in the documents that I had. Hey, I didn't, that wasn't, 19.2 was not in the documents that I had.
That's okay, don't worry about it.
But, but that would still
Bill's been doing this a long time.
That would, that would basically double it, so that you'd be looking at, you're looking at 50 to 60 miles per hour, which would be a fantastic change.
Yeah.
That's still not as detailed as a DC charger, but
Right.
That's a lot, a lot more.
That's the highest AC.
Yeah. So even at that 30 or 30 cents, I mean, we're still, that still gets you a little bit, and that would basically in turn cut that amount of time.
Yeah, in half, right.
So make that 45 minutes per day, seven days a week, 365 days a year.
Right.
Or when, and the five years is done, make it, you know, five and a half hours a day.
So make it easy, somebody comes down, shops for a couple hours, plugs in and they're ready to go.
Yep.
There you go.
Any questions on the potential market rate fees that we would look at? I think, you know, trying to focus into that middle rate gives us the ability to make a little money, you know, we do have, we do have to pay the IMU for the electricity and our rate would be around 13 cents. We have to pay a 3 cent excise tax to the, to the Iowa government in Iowa here, and then that gives us about a 14 cents or so profit, profit, on the electricity that we would then have to put back into some sort of sinking fund to eventually pay for the maintenance or, or upkeep on these as, as we move forward.
How soon will we need to upgrade the technology?
The ChargePoints and, and maybe Bill knows a little bit, they have about a 10-year, 10-year lifespan, given everything, you know, we, obviously for the first five years, we have the full warranty and the full software stack for that. Again, it's hard to know because, you know, five years ago, these weren't even really a thing.
Right.
You know, I mean, there were some, but they, they weren't as, as good as this. Heck, five years from now, when these, when we run out of warranty, ChargePoint may have even a fancier one that delivers even a higher AC level or something, and it would be something that we'd have to look into, but typically, you know, eight to 10 years is, is around as a typical lifespan.
I didn't know if that five-year no worry package included any kind of upgrade.
Nope, they don't do that sort of thing, yeah. But, but like I said, technology is always evolving, so. The last thing on this slide is a little bit about the, the compliance heavy and we'll get, we'll dive into that a little bit more. There is quite a bit of compliance that is going to weigh on the city a little bit about doing this, and let's just kind of jump right into that slide. So one thing to, to talk about is, and we actually had, we actually ran this through Erin, our attorney, to talk a little bit about some of the different things that are concerned for her, and some of those things, let me get back down here to that section. So, I'm sorry, I didn't, I don't have that section handy, it's on this other page. So the, so our city attorney did review some of the things and she kind of gives us this clawback risk. You know, in, in the actual contract, there is a, a repayment risk, right? So Section 6 and 13 of the, of the contract do say that any funds that are disallowed by an audit, such as any type of non-compliance, must be repaid to the IADA. So if we do anything wrong during any of this stuff, basically the grant goes away. And some of the things that can go wrong are, are these two major ones, the Davis Bacon Act, which requires us, the city, to validate everything that the subcontractors do. We have to keep track that they are paying their subs, their contractors and subcontractors the going rate, so like an electrician is on their site, we have to pay the market rate of a unionized electrician in, in our county or in our area. We have to, not only do we have to make sure that they're doing that, we also, the city will have to designate a, a person, finance person most likely, to do weekly audits of that during the entire construction process. That is just, that's, that's the red tape of doing, of getting grants from the federal government. So if, and also if there's anything that is wrong with that, say, you know, we don't have the, the right amount of people on the form or whatever, then the grant becomes void and then we're on the hook for continuing the project or, or repaying where we're at. So that's the Davis Bacon Act, and then there's also the Build America by America or the BABA Act. We're also beholden to that, which states that we must, before we begin any building of this product or any, any, the first shovel hits the ground, we have to obtain all the certificates proving that everything that's going to be made is, you know, all the steel, all the copper is American made. Fortunately for us though, that a lot of the BABA Act stuff is covered under the contract that we are going to be, a state contract that we'd like to utilize for this building with, with the, with the, with the sub, with the person that we're going to have putting in the stuff. So, so BABA is not quite as big, but the, but the Davis Bacon Act is, is a big compliance issue for us, and that's also what our attorney has also put forward on her recommendations also, as the liability and the federal mandates that really are, are strict and making sure that we pay the prevailing wage and follow the BABA Acts as well. The other, the other issue pointed out by the attorney is also that this is a refund grant, and what that means is we have to put the money forward first. So the city will be on the hook for, you know, you can kind of see my, my graph there on the top, that just kind of shows that, you know, we're going to be putting all this money out and once we have substantial payments across, after a month, about three, we can actually start putting in for reimbursements. Once again, to put in for those reimbursements, we have to use the, the State of Iowa's LCPT tracker tool, put in all the compliance issues and put in everything, and then we can start getting monthly reimbursements back from that. So it's, it's a little, a little of our money upfront, but as long as we maintain the compliance and maintain all that stuff, we, we will get it back. Once again, that, that tops out at that 83,000, so if we go over that, anything over that, such as, you know, copper became more or something changed, then that becomes a problem. Now, I should have mentioned this earlier, the quote that we have from the contractor did expire in, last month. I have reached out to him and talked to him and he basically said that, that quote is still good. I have a meeting with him on the 10th to solidify that, that, so that contract, so the numbers are still going to be accurate. At first, at first I read his email backwards and I thought he said there was a 10% increase, I'm like, ah, but I, no, he was just, it was something else. I, I wasn't, I wasn't reading it very properly, so. We also have put forth a pretty aggressive timeline to try to get this done. We do have actually, the, the grant has to be fully complete by September of 26, but we are trying with our list to see if we can get it done by the end of the fiscal year so that we would have room in case things go a little over or need a little more space. That's where we have kind of have created this implementation timeline. That's about it for this slide. Questions on all of that? I've been throwing a lot of stuff at you.
Do you, or have you guys talked about the amount of staff time it would, it would take to do all the paperwork needed in order to get reimbursement on, on the weekly basis?
No, that's, that's kind of why we're bringing this to you guys now, just to kind of get your take, like, do you want us to continue and, and calculate those numbers? We know that it'll probably be at least a couple hours a week minimum to do the, to do at least even just the Davis Bacon Act, because we'll have to talk to the contractors, get their payrolls, get their, their timesheets, pull those in and we'll probably have to
3,500 for administration in that grant.
Yes. $3,500 over six months.
That pays for our time, but are we confident that our staff has the time to do what's necessary?
Yeah, at this point, I would say we are confident we're going to have the time and frankly, because the Sustainability Committee has gone through the time and effort of getting the grant, we've got an opportunity to bring additional folks to the downtown square. It was just one of those things that we'll have to add on to our plate and go through the process.
Have we done a Davis Bacon project? Do we know recently, Jackie or Sanders?
I see Doug shaking his head back there.
Yeah, we have. And we've been fine with that, we've had no issues with it?
So far. Are you have one in progress or?
Done trails, road, all kinds of things.
So the, you do have to maintain all that documentation for three years with Davis Bacon?
Right.
And they can opt in and audit you anytime, but I don't know that Indianola would be a target for a, an audit necessarily, but you never know, right? So, so moving on, you know, the, I, I think there is definitely some upsides, right? And, and there's also some risks that we need to, to evaluate. Obviously, one of the biggest upsides is potentially $100,000 worth of infrastructure. The reason I call it $100,000 worth of infrastructure is you have $89,000 worth of physical infrastructure. If you add in the, like, work that IMU has, so I forgot to mention this a little bit, IMU, even though they're going to be writing, we're going to be buying the chargers from them, they're basically in-kind working almost $6,000 with the free work to install those for us, which is a, without that $6,000, it probably would have, this whole project would not even be anywhere near that. So, you know, obviously we get $100,000 worth of infrastructure at no cost of our own, but at the same time, there is that, there is a pretty significant admin burden with all of the compliance and, and all those things. So free capital infrastructure, five-year no worry window, and like we talked about before, it's future-proof technology, those, those, those ChargePoints are fantastic chargers that will work for all of the different visitors and stuff like that. The sum of the risks is that razor-thin margin, that $84.05, you know, that's a, that's a little scary on our side, that we would have to potentially put actual general fund money into this project. Once again, I, I keep talking about the, the compliance and I know, I know that the, the city manager feels that we can do it, but it's, it's a, it's a little work. I'm not going to, not going to lie about it, it's, it's a little work for us to do that, but I have confidence and our, and our teams are fantastic. Cassandra will do a great job for nothing, I'm just kidding. So it's not, it's not unreasonable, it's just we need to, as a, as a, as a body, understand that it is adding stuff to our plate. So.
I might add, the subcontractor that's going to do this installation deals with Davis Bacon all the time, Baker Electric, so.
Yeah. I, I don't think we have any concerns necessarily about some of those. They, 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 I'm sure have done a lot of projects into that thing, it's just, there is the, you know, collecting it from them and I, I know they're good at giving us that stuff and just making sure that we do it, you know. Like I said, it's, it's just, just time consuming more than probably anything, but moving forward, that's just something that we need to make sure we're aware of. So basically five key takeaways that I want to make sure you guys have a, have a thought for is, yes, fully funded, you know, like I said, the, the $86,000 plus the, I also want to do a shout out, because I forgot to do that at the beginning, $1,000 from, from DeArmond, well, $500 from DeArmond and another $500 from Greg Young has really helped, that's a, that's a fantastic thing for, shout out to those two car, car dealerships here in Indianola for providing those, those funds. And also a big, a big thank you to our partner at IMU for the, for the $6,190 in in-kind work that really helped make this possible. Once again, the second, the second takeaway is that, that very thin, razor-thin margin of, of contingency. Another third takeaway is, you know, the gaining of a fantastic asset, a potential asset that would draw people who might not normally come down or, or, or see it as an amenity to come down, like, like the mayor mentioned, you know, maybe somebody who says, hey, what a, what a great feature, I can charge up my car so I can get back to, to Des Moines after a game or whatever. Well, it's a little bit of a walk to this college, but hopefully it's a nice day, not a, not a snow game. Once again, I still feel that that is a, is a, a pretty significant administration person, and then the last thing is, you know, that long-term commitment. One question that might get brought up is, you know, if after five years, can we sell the chargers to another entity or can we sublease them out with this federal grant? No, we cannot. We are, the city has to be the owner for the feasible lifetime of the chargers. So you asked how long they last, seven, eight, 10 years, that's how long we are kind of beholden to do that. If we were to attempt to do any sale or ship them off to, you know, IMU, like, hey, you guys manage them, then that would be a breach of the contract and we would have to pay it back, so.
But the user fee is, is that set for the five years or is that set for just one year?
You can, you, the user fee is set by what we want to set it and we can, you could, you could have discount days and make it 30 cents on one day and 45 cents on the other if you wanted to. I would suggest not doing that, but, you know, and every penny that you do, you know, does help that a little bit. So I did calculations at 30 cents, which gives us that great break even, I did a calculation at 33 cents, which is still under the Midwest, the, the regional average, and it really helped provide a little bit more cushion throughout the year. So those, those rates can be set by us at, at any time, and also probably needs to be dictated by how much are, you know, we're paying for electricity from IMU and all those things, rates change continuously. So what we're asking tonight is just for you to give, give basically us a little bit of direction, you know, should we proceed with this project? Do you want us to, do you have any more details that you want us to try to research out or figure out? And then we can prepare the resolutions. There, it will require two resolutions. The first resolution is a conflict of interest resolution, which basically states that we, the City of Indianola, pledge to have no conflict of interest on any of the people who work on it or know and can benefit from it. There was a concern at first, when I thought, looked into this about, oh, wait a minute, if we're paying IMU to put these in, is that a conflict? But it is not because IMU is actually considered a part of the city, so it's actually, they are considered city, city assets, and then therefore we also don't even have to track IMU's work on it because they are somewhat officially the city. So that works out for us in, in that ways. And so we'll prepare the two resolutions and then we'll have it ready for you on December 15th.
I have a question for you, Jason. So we have like, potentially have two spots on the square.
Four spots.
Four spots on the square with a parking issue already. What is the plan to either try to free those spots up for like an EV?
So
Or leave them open? Cause, you know, I think, you know, we can talk about that it's great, oh, they'll come down, they'll, they'll plug in until cars are. Is there a plan to try to do that and if so, should there be, given some of the parking issue?
What we would suggest, what the, what the, what staff would suggest is providing, creating an ordinance that would state that those, those four spots on the square are EV spots only, and that if a, to, to qualify to park in those spots, you actually must have to, you have to be actively charging. So you can't just have an EV and park there thinking, hey, look, it's, it's not EV parking, it's EV charging parking. If a vehicle is parked there that is not, it can of course receive a, a ticket for, you know, a, a spot, blocking the spot, or at worst case be towed at the owner's expense, and that would be part of an ordinance that we would create to go along with this as well.
Okay. Would they have to be, I don't know, maybe I'm hard for the horse here, but actively charging the whole time? Just thinking of an instance, maybe somebody's there for quite a while, they charge, charged, unplug.
If, if they unplug, they do need to move their vehicle to someone else to be able to come in, but even the high-speed level two chargers, unless they're going to be there for, you know, nine hours, they're probably not going to fill all the way up, but if they do park and, you know, only use an hours of electricity and they're no longer actively charging, then it is time for them to move their vehicle to allow someone else to charge.
So let's say in two years, we average 15 minutes a day. Can we just walk away from the program and say, ah, it's, it's costing the city too much money and
No, we can't.
We can't? So we're locked in for the five years?
Yes. Acceptance of this means acceptance of it for the period of more likely, more than five years, well, five years is kind of at a minimum, yes.
But then that costs us anything for five years?
It's cost, no, it does, it does have a, if, if we're only, let's say we're only 15 minutes a day, we do have a cost of 570, let me get to that. a day, we do have a cost of 570, let me get to that slide, $576 a year, that is the bare minimum that it's gonna cost us, because we have to pay IMU for the meter fees. There's two meters, they cost $24 apiece a, a month, and that's, that's the bare minimum price that we, so if no one comes to them ever, we're out $576 a year.
And then at the end of that five years, we can just scrap it?
I, I suppose we could, because the, that has been a long enough, there is risk in that, but, but you're right, yes.
Yeah, then we would be, we'd be on the hook for the, the software licensing.
And then at the end of that, in 2031, it does jump up to $5,700 a year. If no one plugs in.
Yeah.
Right, you know, I mean, for every, for every, you know, couple hours I plug in, that offsets that by 14 cents, remember? So, we have to pay for the electricity that they suck and then we get 14 cents back, so. Or, depending on what rate you decide, if you decide to charge a 40 cents, then we would get 24 cents back per kilowatt hour.
I just said, nobody's got a crystal ball to know is.
No.
You know, it's, again, it's a technology world. Long ago.
Yeah.
Did things change yesterday? That's just gonna continue, so.
The only, I mean, personally, the only concern I would have is, you know, the, right now in our current atmosphere, EV sales are down, just because gas prices are down, you know, they, they work in tandem, when gas prices go up, EV sales go up. But that's not to say that, you know, there are 531 registered EVs in the county, you know, so that, that's a positive. I'm sure there's probably a lot more than that in Polk County, you know, so, and we have an EV owner right here, so he, he drives an EV, you know, so I don't know if there's any other EV owners in, in the room, no, so.
I think there are at least three on the sustainability committee.
Two, one of them drives a Prius, so it's not quite an EV, pretends to be an EV. I hate to drive a, a Prius, I asked that at the thing, so. So, two of them do, one of them drives a.
Big C.
An almost EV.
So, if the city would ever decide to get an electric vehicle for community development or whatever the case would be, would we still be able to use that charging station?
Absolutely. So, it's, let's say the city would decide to buy a couple of the electric vehicles, one thing you could do is drive them over there at night, plug them in, park them, charge them overnight, maybe fully charge in the morning and you'd be off and running for the whole day, or actually probably two or three days. You know, the average, the average electric vehicle probably gets more like, you know, 200 miles of range on a full charge. In the winter, it goes a lot further down, but in the summertime, it stays pretty good. You know, if he, if we buy one like, like Jake's EV here on the last picture, you know, that one probably gets more like about 400 miles to the.
The Bruple, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, I, I'm not looking for an answer today, I just wanted a little bit of direction, continue to get more data, stop altogether, things like that.
Hey, Jason, can you go back to that last slide? I want to make sure I'm understanding it, if you don't mind.
Tell me which one's the last one, the one with this one?
All right, the break-even one.
Break-even one.
Your 10 hours versus 20, so if we, at this proposal, if we do 20 hours a week, we would net a couple hundred dollars, right?
If we, if, 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 well, and that, and, yes, so 20 kilowatts would net you, that, it's a little, sorry, they will co, it would cost us $1,700 and we would make $2,190.
Yep, but then, and that works great for the first five years, but after five years, we're $5,700 in the hole every year, right?
Right, you, you add to that 17, 15, you add another $5,000.
Jason, I don't think it's 5,000 per year, I think it's 5,000 for an additional five years, correct?
No, it's 5,000 a year.
Per year for what?
Yes, for the software maintenance and warranty fees.
So, it's 5,000 for the first five years, then it's 5,000 per year?
No, the first five years, we don't pay anything, which equals, you know, five times, it was a $25,000, like bonus in the thing. After that, it's, it's, it's roughly $5,000 a year, it's 1,200, $1,200 for software and another 1,200, and that's per charge port, per charger, I mean, which two chargers, and the software is based on the port rates, so, and that's now, I mean, that.
Is there math where we don't lose money even with wild adoption, the second five years?
Yeah, if, if we can get the utilization rate above, well, and, and with a, with a little bit more cost, above five hours a day. And that's an average over the whole year, I mean, there'll be probably days where you could get a little more than that, and that's five hours over, over the four chargers. So, if you had five hours, five hours, five hours, five hours, then you're making a lot better deal.
So, I guess just my struggle with this is we're betting on a lot of optimism.
I asked Dan.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, Bill. Josh is trying to make a point, he's online, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we need, need that turned up.
We're, we're betting on a lot of optimism, going into it no contingency, going into it with staff having the time to do it and, and that the usage is gonna be adopted at a rate that, that makes this worthwhile. I'm all for adding amenities for folks, but I'm, I'm very nervous about the math here and how it relates to our budget.
Well, I didn't, what was the comment?
Just a little nervous about if it's gonna.
With no contingency, not having the math there to really cover a contingency.
Yeah, well, I, I asked Dan with district plate what the average utilization of these level-two chargers is, and they've got thousands of them out, and he said 15 to 20% out of a 24-hour day, so that's well above what we're looking at.
Does, I mean, where though? In, in, in Indianola or in a town like Indianola?
Yeah, I mean, that's overall locations, so, yeah.
Is that an average of over all the locations or?
No, I'm not sure about that, but he said, he thought we could expect 15 to 20%, which I thought might be a little high, but if it's, if it, if it's that much, it's phenomenal.
And who is this again, Bill?
The supplier of this equipment.
If I had just heard you correct, you're talking about that five hours a day on average would be across the four.
Yes, it's, it's, I'm sorry, that is spread out across all four, so a total of five hours.
A little over an hour.
If you get each one, an hour and a half.
Yeah.
You're, you're gonna be a six and you're already gonna be in the good.
Remember, that's seven days a week.
Understand.
365 days a year.
Understand.
Looking for direction, folks, so we need to kind of give them some direction.
And one other comment I might make about that hour usage time, that was kind of based on 7.2 kilowatt hour.
Yep, so that's actually make, make that more.
And these are 19 point.
But I, I did make that change in the, in the, in the math, instead of 10 hours at the five-year mark, we went back down to five hours.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Right.
Jason, you mentioned that, that 30 cents is low, what is the average?
So, the average for the Midwest is 35 cents. Let me get back to that slide, so the, the, the second column there is the Midwest average of 35 cents, and like the University of Iowa charges 43 cents for their level-two chargers, and then Des Moines parking is of course way down, but like I said, they have a, they charge you to park in there in the first place. And then, and then the average home charger is gonna be right around that 13 cents, which is the, which is the bulk rate from IMU, so usually people who have those chargers put in, reach out to the local utility and say, hey, I'm putting in a level-two charger in my garage and give me the discount, you know what I mean, a little bit, so.
Do we have any sense how many chargers there are in town public?
In, in Indianola? I think DeArman put in like a few here recently and that's the only ones that I know of. That's it?
Yeah, DeArman's got a DC fast charger.
You mentioned QuickStar.
Uh, there are, the QuickStar in, in Des Moines.
Somewhere else, okay.
Not, not here. Yeah, you know, what, you know, one of the, one of the questions I asked, I, you know, when I was talking to Chris Displanks about it is, and I said like, are you guys interested in doing any of this? And, and they said no to a project like this at this time, so if that is any type of indication of, you know, but they also weren't getting free chargers and free chargers.
Yeah. I do see like it's adding an amenity to help bring people to downtown, maybe charge their car, go shopping, go eat, that might not otherwise, you know, bring them off the beaten path, because we're now on the map as having chargers. I just have that concern, like, we need that utilization at a certain point or we're not breaking even. And, gosh, that margin's really thin. Not to mention the staff time that's, that it's gonna take.
I just wanted to be clear, staff, we don't, I mean, we will do what you ask us to do and we're, we're happy to do that.
So, we talked about the administrative time during the construction process, how about after, after the construction process, where we're no longer having to report materials being used?
Yeah, it would significantly come down, but we still have to manage the chargers, which means we have to, you know, manage the, the collection of the fees and the transmission of all that stuff, but it, but it would be less. I don't know, I don't know how much less, but there was, owning these chargers does create some sort of administration of them, just like owning a, just like owning a gas station. We also, we also would be required to register as an electronic, electric vehicle dealer or a provider, so that, that, and has Iowa implications as well, we have to, to have them, you know, and get the Bill Nordy sticker on the side of them to make sure they, you know, work and all those, those things. So, there are, there are some of those other issues, which we haven't delved into, because we wanted to make sure we get this in front of you first to, to see if it's some like that, but there were, yes, we would have to, have to provide some staff time to manage the just overall operations of them. But I, I, I believe, yes, I believe it would be significantly less or half as much time as would go in during the construction, and also, we have to be able to, you know, maintain all the records for the period of a minimum of three years afterwards.
So, at a maximum, we'd be on the hook for $576 per year, for the first five years?
Yeah, that, that would be our for sure lowest cost moving forward, as long as we didn't incur any cost during construction, yes. That's with no one plugging in. You know, well, again, because mostly because that's just the, the cost of having something connected to IMU's grid, so. And then for every kilowatt hour that's bought, after that, we, we get 14 cents, roughly.
How long do you think that the contractors bid will be good for?
Um, I will find out more of that on the 10th. He did in an email as he was verifying the contract, did say, it's good, the one that you have, I will, I will, he didn't, he's kind of straight away honoring it, but he said, I will get you one that is the same, whether or not it's exactly the same. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping that it's not more than 85, $84.05 more, but the reality is, I mean, that was last summer's contract and, and everything slowly starts to cost more, and the longer we wait to do it, the more things cost.
So, $576 a year for the first five years?
Nobody ever plugs in?
If nobody plugs in, after five years?
You add five, $5,700 total to that.
$5,700.
And if still no one plugs in, then you're on the hook for that.
Yeah. The 576, I guess, doesn't concern me, because I feel like we can surely get enough people to utilize them to cover that.
Yeah, as, as long as we get that cut in and in half, 45 minutes a day, seven days a week.
Were there any conversations, we've heard a lot about, whether it's Main Street, the chamber, somebody trying to utilize the campus, Simpson's campus and the students, whether they're interns or anything like that? Do we have any sense how many electric vehicles they have parked on that campus or families have?
No, I don't know, like.
Does that solves anything? I'm just curious.
The only number that we have concrete is from Warren County, that there are 531 registered electric vehicles in the, in the county.
Where I'm going with this, we were just talking for a minute, is if, if there be any kind of agreement that could be had with the college, I don't know, I'm just throwing this out, to where we might cover some of our losses if they were interested in using that as an amenity as well in some of their promotional stuff, and they, we get an agreement for them to cover some of those costs after the five years.
Well, I, I like the thinking, and that's definitely thinking outside of the box. I mean, I, I don't believe Simpson has any chargers on their campus, so they're not currently actively seeking that for their students either, nor are they for their faculty vehicles or anything like that too. And once again, they're not DC fast chargers, so that they don't provide quite the level of, you know.
I think to Steve's point about somebody that's coming here maybe for the weekend, and they're just plugging in there while they're ballgame or spending the weekend with their kids.
Absolutely, that's a, that's a very.
I'm just looking for ways to try and.
It's a very viable scenario, absolutely.
Give us a little cover on that 5,700 bucks.
Right, and their cars most likely wouldn't be registered in Warren County?
Possibly not, yeah. Like I said, I'm sure that number is significantly more than 530 for like Polk County.
Sure. I, just take a, moving on here, I, I'd be in favor of, of advancing it forward, but my, my, a new concern, which Steve just voiced as well, is, is, do we have, can we have oversight on the administrative side so that we don't, we don't make an error and then we're on the hook for that $86,000? You know, I, I think there needs to be some oversight on that so that we, we don't end up eating that and having to take that out of the general fund.
And by oversight, do you want, a, a member of the, of the council be part of the?
I don't think I'm the guy you need. I, I was thinking.
Are you volunteering, Josh?
I just think we need to have more than, more than one set of eyes on it, right? I think, I think we just need to make sure that our eyes are.
Well, I definitely want more, your set of eyes on it to be the only person.
So, that, that's, as, as Steve and I were talking, then, you know, that's, that's his concern, that, that's definitely a concern I would have as well. The, the $576, I think we're, we're fine on, but definitely don't want to miss out on an error that would cost us $86,000.
I agree with that, but I think what I heard Doug say, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, Doug, but we've dealt with Davis Bacon before, correct?
We have done many federal grants.
Yeah.
So, I think it's a matter of having the right staff with oversight, inspecting each phase of the project, but also making sure we administer it right all, all the way along, and then accepting the final product and, and making sure that everything is good with that, but are you asking for council oversight?
Oh, not at all.
Okay.
I, I mean, I don't want the manager to.
That will take what should be.
So, I, I'm guessing Jake will have the final say in it, I just want to make sure that it's, it's a couple people that look at it to make sure that it's correct before we submit things on a weekly, monthly basis.
I agree, like making sure that we have enough staff involved.
What if I make a suggestion here, that if, if that's where the council wants to go, but let's get some good numbers on that 19.2, what that does and what the hours numbers are, and make sure that we've got that. The difference then between 33 and 35 cents, if we want to just be at the average, and what that does then to our, our numbers.
Absolutely.
I would, and then bring that forward, I guess maybe it's the 15th, but I don't want, it's always, already gonna be a long meeting that night, and so, but I, I think we also have to make sure that Baker Electric, how far into the future are they looking at here that we can, can we run this? looking at here that we can, can we run this into the first meeting in December or January? Are they gonna give us another thirty-day or sixty-day extension on that?
And this timeline that we have of June thirtieth is probably pretty aggressive based, based on what's going on. We do have until September thirtieth to actually complete.
I understand that, but Baker's quote is only good for X number of days, so I want to make sure that that quote is, is gonna be valid then. If we choose to move it to the January, what is that, seventh meeting or sixth meeting or whatever that is, and then make a decision, final decision then on what we do. But again, I think if we're gonna do this, you need to have the numbers for the nineteen point two, so you know what the actual numbers are, how much charging time has to be there to make sure that we're not paying the five seventy-six for the first five years. Um, and then I think we need to just make sure we address that, the, the contract issue.
Yeah, we'll know more about-
But that's my thought. Council makes a decision here. So is that, does that sound good to everybody where we kind of want to go or not?
You favor that?
Yeah, just getting more information.
Yeah, Jason, yeah, making sure the quote is solid. Is it nineteen point two or nine point two that drastically impacts things? We already have a very slim margin to begin with. So let's say they come back and they're like, oh, just kidding, might change some thoughts.
And I will have that answer on the 10th when I have a chance to meet with, with Jerry, I think it's Jerry. Uh, and, um, we'll have a better feel for the quote actually, and then that quote will be good for a, a period of ninety days. Um, and then we'll move forward from that. And I can also, if you'd like, create a table of if we charge thirty cents, thirty-one cents, thirty-two cents, thirty-three cents, you know, where does that meet?
I would just go to thirty-three and thirty-five and save yourself some time.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, Excel is amazing thing.
Yeah, I understand. Just my thinking, but I, meeting on the fifteenth is gonna be long. Do you want to move it to that first meeting in January? What do you want to do? Which, which one do you want to do?
Say January, just to Jason us some time.
I, I'm, 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 I'm good with that too.
As long as Baker will honor their contract.
Yes, I, I will have more, I can provide more information to individuals over time. I can work with Jake. I'm getting that information to you in a, in a proper manner so that we're, we're doing everything right.
Josh, what, what's your thoughts?
I appreciate all the optimism. There's a lot of answers we need, so.
I think if we get the answers, you want, and the decision will have to be on the fifteenth. It'll be up or down. Where we go?
The fifteenth?
No, no, no. First, first meeting in January. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
First meeting in January. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, we're good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, last item.
Good evening, but it's more like good night. Courtney Sullivan, HR Director. See you all. Anybody want to stretch? Stand up.
Okay, you all right? Okay, it's a rock.
All right, let's do it.
You need a break?
Yes.
Okay, we'll take five minutes.
That'd be great. I just want to make sure we're getting all the correct numbers.
Yeah, I think you covered it pretty well. I think, and what, you're gonna talk to him? What? I think he could probably have, or is there highway?
Or that does settle him, they would be, you know, fine, so. Yeah, absolutely. But if you do have anything I just wanted to add, like, maybe we didn't cover.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not a little bit more, I'm, I'm, I don't have a, I feel like-
So yeah, the only ones that I was looking at all, I went with a seven two, so I didn't realize that.
Which has to come out of this budget now. Even to do.
Awesome.
Eighty-five out of our reserves today.
Sounds good.
Hopefully.
I don't have a, we've done, I just want to ask a question because I knew we-
Well, I understood that you're gonna give them some new numbers then.
Yeah, just to try to paint up the numbers that they were asking for. We're gonna be on the January first one instead now.
That's why I-
And we need, we might need to ship our timeline a little bit, maybe add a month.
As long as, as long as, you know, Dan's okay.
No, I, I'm with you though. I'm with you.
And I think it's gonna require anyway, it's gonna be, have to be a little bit more-
You gonna be still be able to get that Big Mac on the way home tonight?
The nice thing is it's like underground work is done.
Yeah, no, that's right. He should.
He's been doing charges on it.
Yeah, I, I think it's gonna be installed a lot easier than my last job.
Yeah.
In the mountains, but, um, yeah, well, um, so I will let you know if I have any questions.
Charger.
Thanks, sir. Oh.
Compared to this, yes, this, we're owning a super expensive, but we paid even, I think I had, and we had a transformer closer, but it was like, we, we paid like the same.
That's a little different.
Four thousand to a T C electrician to get the, get the wiring and everything over there. And then we paid eight thousand.
All of this on Iowa grants, not go-
And then the eight thousand dollars, the charging was still a little-
No, it was pretty straightforward. It was all that, but it's just, I just want to make sure that you had that.
More than you need, and it costs you twenty-seven dollars.
You know, a few hours a week or something.
Dirtier, well, I should say dirtier. And then, and I never even paid attention to all the, uh, electric costs were because they just went into our city hall project. So it's like, we never, I'm sure with the county, somebody-
At minimum, I'm, 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 I think the utilization would be more than that.
All right, you know, I, I would only, I really, the future optimism.
Yeah, well, I, it's not really not a lot of what we're talking about.
No, not that, that, so the, the break even at, uh, at, so they had two hours, so.
Yeah, three sets of eyes right there.
So you only, only need a couple.
So I think that you, I, I, I think utilization.
Thanks, Bill.
Yep.
Bob, if you need a water, there is, um, water in the fridge.
Oh, I can just fill this. Save that for somebody else. Thanks.
All right, you bet.
Appreciate it.
Sell your tire blankets yet?
It's been on the entire time.
No.
He does.
We still have things left back in town, so I just don't have a dry, yeah. It takes me like ten minutes to get here, which is so annoying. It's like first round problems. I just really have to like jaunt around to get to my house.
Work through it. All right, yours, it's all yours.
All right, well, welcome back. The city engaged MGT, formerly Gov. HR, to conduct a classification and compensation study to ensure internal and external equity and market competitiveness. The council adopted recommendations of the classification and compensation study in January of two thousand and twenty-three. We are midway through the five-year compatibility of this plan and wanted to take the opportunity to educate and inform council on the current administration of the compensation plan. This evening, we are going to cover a few things, but again, just, really just information for the council on the development and the administration of a comp plan. We will cover compatible city criteria, compatible cities, compensation range, grade and step, classification plan development, annual administration and future administration. In way of the comparable city criteria, seven criteria were used to find the comparable cities for external equity. Population, median household income, total valuation, property tax revenue, total expenditures, salary and wages paid and proximity to Indianola. Within each of the U seven category, categories, excuse me, the ranges of compatibility were established. For example, the closer a community was matching the Indianola's estimated population, the closer the community would be to receiving the maximum of fifteen points. A community whose population was significantly larger or smaller than the city of Indianola's population would receive fewer or even zero points. A municipality achieving a total of one hundred points would be considered our most comparable city to the, the city of Indianola. A community with zero points was determined to be the least compatible. Any questions? In way of total compatibility, there were eleven communities with the total compatibility of seventy points or greater. Um, those with seventy or points, seventy or more points were the most comparable based on the seven criteria that we just discussed. The list of eleven cities chosen to be our comparable city are Altuna, Newton, Clive, Norwalk, Pleasant Hill, Grimes, Oscalusa, Waki, Marshalltown and Etan. In addition, the council requested market data to be collected from the larger communities that are competitors in the marketplace, Ankeny, Urvendale, West Des Moines and Des Moines. These communities are considered a comparable community for compensation range data. And when the ranges were developed, um, based on the most, eleven most compatible cities, the four larger competing cities were also included and they are considered annually when we review the COLA or Cost of Living Adjustment. In way of compensation range, grade and step, the compensation range is at the fiftieth percentile, um, which allowed the city to remain competitive but not too aggressive. Our classification and compensation plan consists of twelve pay grade levels. Uh, for those that have been on council, it was previously eleven. We have added one, uh, to the director and senior manager level with the deputy city manager, just to kind of give you an idea of how the tool continues to be used. Um, one is the lowest and twelve is the highest and is broken down into four bands. We just call them bands, um, and provided internal equity, uh, by position. Grade one is administrative support. Grades two through four is administrative and technical. Grades five through eight supervisors and advanced technical and grades nine through twelve directors and senior managers. The defined increment step plan has, uh, ten steps that progress from the minimum on the left all the way to the maximum on the right with a three point four percent gradation in between each step. Employees are advanced to the steps based on an annual satisfactory performance evaluation and the ten-step model is not overly aggressive, but about right in the middle with our comparable cities. The defined increment plan allows maximum flexibility, uh, for the city relative to recu- recruitment and funding as employees can be hired within the range at a specific step or given the city's goal to recruit, retain and reward motivated high performing employees, a defined increment step, um, you know, at the time was approved and implemented by, by council and staff. Any questions on the, the percentile or anything we've covered? The classification plan development is a thorough job evaluation, uh, that we conduct to score the position, not the incumbents' qualifications, performance or years of service. For example, we add a new position, um, I'm gonna use a deputy city manager only because we have a grant, uh, um, the position was evaluated, the job description was created, scored and reviewed and then updated using the job evaluation tool that Gov. HR, now MGT, provided us. So we, we value, um, each of those determinants that we've covered either on the job itself or, uh, within the position to make sure that it's properly scored based on essential functions. There are nine factors that we use, uh, when we are determining internal equity. Um, and it's using the job evaluation tool that I just discussed. Covering preparation and training, experience required, decision-making and independent judgment, responsibility for policy development, planning of work, contact with others, work of others, is there any supervision exercised, working conditions and the use of technology or other specialized equipment. Any questions? Annually, HR maintains the classification and compensation documents using the valuable tools that we were provided, um, by Gov. HR, now MGT. We conduct ongoing reviews of comparable cities to obtain the cost of living or the COLA wage increases. This information provides council, uh, with the average COLA to consider when budgeting. And annually, we are reviewing and maintaining the classification and compensation plan to ensure external equity and to remain competitive with the market. The study, again, approved in two thousand and twenty-three has five years of compatibility. We are in year three of five. As far as future administration, council can choose to continue under our current compensation plan until FY twenty-eight. Council can choose to fund another, uh, study and consider removing the four larger cities that would cost approximately twelve thousand dollars. And staff recommends using the Midwest CPI with a cap as the basis for the annual cost of living adjustment.
So on the second bullet point, Courtney?
Yes.
Can we just, uh, remove those four cities ourselves? I mean, when we were looking through the data, can we just remove the Des Moines, West Des Moines, um, Waki and that, I, I, Urb- Urvendale, thank you.
So because we're in year three of five, it made more sense because we're using current but older data that if we're going to remove them, that we just revamp the study and consider going and just redoing the data that we already have with those four larger cities excluded. So it, while it's not impossible, it'd be best to redo the study to get that information.
Revis the, the other eleven cities that you have.
Correct. To just revisit the, the whole plan.
But we could just take the four out.
You could, but you're still working off of the old data then for the little smaller cities. Is that what I'm reading?
We would, not old data, but be working on year three of five years of data from the comparables that we've already established, the eleven and the four larger. Yes.
Good. What's the current Midwest CPI? Do you know?
Two point nine six, I believe. I have not looked today, but that's what it was in our recent conversations with council.
Federal, federal checks just went up two point eight percent. Will in January.
We can fact check that. Please, Jake.
So I have a question. If we do pay to do the update to the compensation plan, would we also have the eleven cities that we currently use evaluated? And the reason I ask is because Waki's population has changed dramatically and I guess I think falls now outside the range that we used initially.
We didn't specifically ask, um, MGT when we contacted them about these larger cities, but my assumption, and I can again, uh, get fact on this if that's council's desire, that we, we would revisit all of them. I do think that that price does include revisiting all of them, but again, I wanna, I wanna make sure.
Thank you.
But my understanding from the response that we received from MGT was that it would be, uh, an analysis of the entire plan for twelve thousand because they already have our book of business, if you will. They have a lot of the data that we, we had to initially, uh, yeah, plug in and then provide. Yeah, great question. Thank you.
I, I'm just, I mean, for some reason I'm not tracking. So the information I read through in the packet yesterday, that was old data?
So are, are you referencing the hundred-page final report from Gov. HR?
Yeah.
It's not old. It's the original January two thousand and twenty-three information.
So when we had them do this current study, um, where are those numbers, I guess? Did, did we have them do a compensa-? Okay, okay.
We did not. Nope, this is just education and information only. Yep. And then, um, our smaller subcommittee group had suggested that we resubmit the January two thousand and twenty-three plan to you all, so you could, you could have that at your fingertips again. For the complete information.
And what's, you know, we just spent the twenty-four thousand. What did that get us?
Um, quite a few things, actually. Um, internal equity, which we did not have. Um, we did not have positions based on essential function. We didn't have any of the bands. There was no continuity amongst positions.
So it, it, it wasn't financial, it was more- So it, it wasn't financially, it was more integrating staff with current or updated job families?
Yes, internal and external equity. So we are comparing ourselves to the comparables based on position and essential functions by job. There were job, you know, job analysis questionnaires completed by each staff, and then they reevaluated all that information to put them into their band, if you will, to make sure that we are properly paying our staff based on the essential functions of the job. Yep. And then it helps keep us competitive year over year. We're contacting each of those comps every year to say, what are you doing with your Cost of Living Adjustment? They provide us that information. And then all of the tools that they've provided us continue to be used and utilized every time we have a new position or change. And then, of course, annually, when we are making our recommendations to council for salary changes.
So I know since this was done, our salaries, which is the biggest part of our budget, skyrocketed. And as we continue to face property tax reform, and we will have even more of it, we're evaluating everything, and I, we should evaluate everything. I mean, we evaluated Cuyahoga. We're going to have to go through all of it. And when I look at some of the comparable cities, I go, I, I kind of look at baseball and go, I see some Dodgers, Yankees, and Mets on there, and we're not that in terms of what we can do. And I think we have to continue to dive into this because when we're going through our budget, we're, I mean, I was, it's the biggest part, and if we're going to, you know, try to get a balanced budget that can go forward every year, I just think we have to, we have to look at it. So, I mean, I think we just start by ourselves, taking the four cities out and seeing what the data does, what's that telling us? Or do we, and then we go, do we need to redo the whole thing? But I know since this was done, we found our salaries skyrocket, and we have to do something about it because we're going to continue to be hamstringing at the state level, and we can't keep up with the cost increases that are happening. Our additional revenue didn't, it wouldn't have covered the merit that we had froze. So how do we continue to do what we're doing? I mean, I'm talking everything, too. I'm not just talking salaries, I'm talking step raises, how much should those be? Should they be all or nothing? Talking all of it. I mean, we got to, we, we got to read, we got to look at everything. Our additional revenue was going to be what, maybe like 150,000, something like that? And then we froze merit raises and that saved us 200, right? So.
Yeah, I'll finish your point there.
As property tax reform happens, it's going to continue to happen, we have to evaluate everything. Because we want to? No? No, I'm sure we don't really want to have to evaluate every single thing, line by line. But that's what's being tasked of us by the state of Iowa.
Well, what I would say, and I don't disagree with you in, in, as far as how tight the budget is, I think the thing that we've got to keep in mind that one of the reasons that some of these comparables were put together in the first place back in '23, and Ron, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, or Josh, was because we wanted to make sure that we weren't losing people to the metro area. And because we were. I mean, we were losing, I think we lost a bunch of police officers one year because they went to City of Des Moines, they went to Clive. I mean, I think we lost four one year or something along that line, and then the cost to recoup that was even greater. And so the cost benefit analysis was that it's better to give raises here than to lose and spend $85,000 a person or 100,000. I don't remember what, can you share, what number you threw out there? Huh?
Sixty-four thousand.
Sixty-four thousand to hire somebody and then have to go through all the training and stuff. So that was kind of the, the concept behind that. And I understand what you're saying about the, you know, the salaries jumped quite a bit, but we also were not equitable in some of our, fortunately, in some of our female positions that we're not having equitable salaries either in comparable to some of the cities. That's just the historical background of it. But again, I also think we have to kind of weigh a little bit, do we want to be in a position where we are not compatible, comparable again to some of the metro areas and start losing people again? I, I understand, yeah, if they're going to leave, they're going to leave, I get that. But at the same time, I, I think we need to be able to pay our staff competitively because it does take a long time to train new people and bring new people in. So that's, that was the historical background of that. If there's, and we can go a different direction, that's fine, I'm just giving you why the study was done in '23.
Yeah, that's why I kind of likened it to baseball. Because, you know, Paul Skeens is probably going to be a Yankee, right? Because of the Pirates market. And so we, you know, we have to try to balance it, but we, we just, we can't compete with some of those markets all the time, every time. We have to live within our means.
The City of Des Moines, good news about, well, not the good news, bad news for City of Des Moines was, they, their budget was what, 18 million short? So I mean, you know, yeah, there's another side to it, too. So, yeah, yeah. I, it's, I, I'm not trying to make any arguments here, I'm just telling you the historical reason for it. And I think that we've got a very thin staff in the sense that we don't have a lot of fat on the bone, so to speak. And, and I think that's why the staffing studies have been done, too, is not only, not necessarily for staff-wise and deciding staff issues, but where can we be more effective in our processes so that they're more efficient as well? And, you know, I'm sitting here looking, we've got staff here that are, here it's what, nine o'clock at night, and they've been here all day, too, and they'll be back in the morning. And so those are all things I, I consider. I mean, we, it's just different how we look at things. But as far as what you're asking for us tonight, what are you asking specifically here? We move forward with this, or what are we looking at?
Really, to provide, I wanted to provide some education and information on the current administration and the annual review of the plan. If council wanted to continue under the current compensation and classification study until FY '28, that's when the, the plan is, continues to be compatible for. Or if the council wanted to choose revisiting the plan, we could do that. And then, of course, the recommendation to have a unified tool for the Cost of Living Adjustment using the Midwest CPI with a cap because we currently do not have a tool and think that that would help, help you on in making those decisions.
Okay. So the three things in front of us are really what we got to consider when we move forward, then.
Mayor Council, I, I think one thing I just want to point out is that this is how we guide our compensation for non-union positions. So when we say reevaluate everything, really all we're reevaluating is our non-union positions. So a significant portion of our employees are covered by a union, collective bargaining unit. So really, we got to kind of take into consideration that anything we do with this does not impact them at this time.
Go ahead, Bob.
Well, and I would just say, I, I appreciate everything that's been said so far. But with respect, Steve, I, I think to like the baseball analogy, with the number of different intersection points that this, this is built on, instead, it's not just built on population base, it's not just built on their tax base. I think there are enough factors in here, at least for me, that I understand the formula on how it's trying to give a little more information on all these cities so that we are getting the best compare, comparable cities we can to, to benchmark ourselves against. And, and with the scoring of each of those, because I asked this question when they presented this to Melissa and myself last week, I guess it was, when you go from a 15-point to an 11-point, I thought that was a pretty good drop-off. Well, and then when you see the, the population swing and, and the ranges they use for that, that's what made me a little more comfortable with the methodology, at least behind it. I understand what you're saying about the bigger cities and, and those four. And I understand what you're saying about Waukees since '23. But I'd say for the most part, when you look at these, the, there are enough factors in here that I think most of it's going to wash out similar with these top ones, I think.
I guess why aren't we using our union contract comparables? I mean, if we're hung up, I mean, that's like six.
Our union contract comparables do include those larger communities from what I recall.
It goes like six, is what was, ended up being agreed upon.
And I think that's a, that's a valid point. I mean, we could look as a future opportunity to try to standardize our comparable communities for all positions.
I'm just saying, Bunchtime's going to be fun. Bunchtime's going to be fun.
Well, yeah.
I guess the question for me still is, given the tax, property tax reform that we know is going to continue, I mean, we know how tight that it made things, and knowing that it's going, we've already promised more in the coming year, does it make sense to continue down the path of using cities that do not match us in terms of property tax evaluation? We're using cities that are many times larger than us, and therefore, we just can't compete with them. And I'm afraid that that is part of our problem, and, and that's why I've been questioning Yes, I want to compensate our employees fairly, and if we were to make any change, I wouldn't advocate to dial any of our existing employees' wages down. It, it would be for any new hires, if any salary ranges changed. I guess that would be my, my opinion, but opinion of one.
I agree with that. Like I said, I just, how do we continue to go down the path that we're going down, knowing rollback, likely is going back two, three percentage points?
Two, yeah, two percent.
And more, more hamstringing after growth rate?
The one thing that, that, I, I will tell you that the league is trying to push hard is to tie some things into the CPI as far as what property tax revenue that you can achieve. If the state wants to dial some things back, because that's, they're trying to get some equity so that we're, every year, we're not going through this, this big roller coaster of we have good years and we have these bad years, and so down the road, and trying to get some consistency and figure out a way to do that. But again, to your point, yes, there's going to be some property tax relief, quote unquote. But I think what we have to look at here from you folks, what, just go back to your three items you had there, there you go. I think the real discussion is, do you want, do you think we want to spend the 12,000 to redo the thing? Do we just want to pull that out ourselves? If you're okay with the Midwest CPI, that's okay. If not, I haven't really heard much about that. And then whether or not you want to continue on the current compensation plan until fiscal year '28. So I think those are really the questions in front of you.
Mayor Council, if I may, we can redo, you could pay the $12,000 to update the study, you know, based on my experience and, you know, coming into this profession around the Great Recession time, it wasn't common to decrease salaries regardless, right? So really, what you're looking at would be a wage freeze, more than likely, if you were to redo things. So even if you redid the study right now, you know, your, your effect may be the same as what happened this year, where there was no staff increases given outside of a Cost of Living Adjustment. So you could spend $12,000, you may learn some things, we can take out the larger cities, we can reevaluate that. But the thing is, that Courtney mentioned, is that this data is now two years old. So even your Norwalks, your Pellos, the communities that are smaller than us, you know, they, this year, for example, we compared them, all of those communities gave a merit increase this year, and Indianola did not. So frankly, all of their wages are continuing to increase while ours are not. So even spending the money to redo this study is likely going to show that our even smaller peer communities are continuing to pay more while we are not. So if we pay the extra $12,000, the odds are is we're going to probably see that our employees are probably right in the range of where they should be. Based on that study alone, you're likely not going to get justification to decrease wages. What you may have is justification to freeze wages, but frankly, we could do that without paying $12,000 for an additional study.
So where do you want to go?
I'd pull for ourselves, and I'm fine with the Midwest CPI.
We don't have the data to pull that.
We don't have the what?
As I said, we don't have the data to pull this for, correct?
The four larger, and that's, that's why there is a fee associated with that. The, the original study did not include those four larger cities. The council at the time requested that they be added. It was after the study had, had really been conducted, and so it was an add-on to the, the previous plan, and we don't have that data, and that's why MGT needs to do it for $12,000.
And Courtney, if I may, I believe that to redo the study is 12. I think to have them just remove the four out of the old data was like three or four thousand.
Three or four.
Yeah.
But it's, why would you?
There would still be a fee for it.
There would still be a fee, but if, if you're already going to go back to them, you may as well just have them revamp the entire.
We don't own our own data.
It's not that we don't own it, it, we just don't, it was an add-on to the original plan. And so we don't have the four larger cities.
Broken out.
Broken out. They were included in the percentile and the range data, but we don't have their individual information. They were not part of the original survey.
What did you guys do in '23?
Well, we were trying to keep people on.
External equity and market competitiveness because we didn't have either one.
Sure, but to not get your own data to be able to.
Well, not our data, it's their data, so those.
I mean, I mean, it's public record, I mean, you could, right? It's public record, so it's not like it's top secret data that they're protecting.
But they, they pull it together, take the time and the staff to do that, and they pull it together. That's what the whole point was. You're paying somebody basically to do, gather all the data, and then include it into your system.
Sure, but then you should have the ability to, to see the data and.
We did, we saw the data.
And then pull in, or pull out if you choose to.
Well, if you didn't choose to, though, that's probably, that's the point.
But you should be able to future forward.
But I think the point is that that was data from 2023, and if you're going to pull it out now, it's not going to be 2023 data. Am I correct in that, or am I still wrong in that?
The data would still be from 2023.
Correct.
Okay.
Because we are responsible for the annual administration, which we've done, and we update those comprehensive tables, and our, we continue to use the job evaluation tool, but the, the study itself was a freeze in time, if you will. We update it annually.
All of that, Council, is different than what it is today?
I get what you're saying. So if you pulled it out, it would only tell us the difference in salary ranges back in 2023?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
I get what you're saying.
I think it's one of these things where it's tough to make the, make the call when, without really knowing any of the budget information, right, how we want to proceed with future compensation. At least that's how I'm struggling with it.
future compensation. At least that's how I'm struggling with it.
Yeah, I agree, Ron. And even though this is the largest part of the budget, we still don't know all the other factors. Other than the fact that we aren't going to have flexibility, I don't think, as sad as that is, to just say, oh, we'd like to do this, or we'd like to do that. Because it's all going to come at a cost.
We look back to how high the percentages were, the salaries of each department's budget were last year. I don't imagine that that's going to have changed a whole lot. That's what makes it difficult.
So any direction tonight on how we're going to move forward with the upcoming fiscal year's compensation plan? Or is this just to give us a little guidance as to what our three options possibly are?
It was, as Courtney mentioned, it was an educational opportunity. You know, really, as she mentioned, you know, the plan itself is valid for five years. We're kind of in the middle. I know there were some conversations on the four larger communities. So if there was a burning desire from council, if we wanted to remove those four larger communities, reevaluate our peer communities and get updated information, essentially, that would become a $12,000 expense. The council would find value in us pursuing that. Otherwise, we would continue on with the current compensation plan that we have until FY '28, when it would be no longer valid, just because the data would be five years old. And that's the best practice time to go ahead and refresh it. The second component of that is just, there was a request for what is a good basis or a possible metric for the cost of living adjustments that we've given in the past. As Courtney mentioned, you know, one of the methods was to just compare it to a lot of what our peers were doing. And frankly, that's a valid method. But most of them are likely basing their cost of living on a metric of some sort. And just one of the things that I've experienced in my career is, depending on which part of the country you're in, the regional cost of living or CPI, Consumer Price Index, is usually a pretty good basis of measurement. Because that way, you're taking that basket of goods, seeing what your average increase is, and then you're aligning your cost of living adjustment with that to hopefully help your employees kind of keep pace. The reason we put, you know, the CPI with a cap in there is because we are, you know, historically, we've done pretty good about keeping inflation at that three-ish percent number. But, you know, not so many years ago, when we were in the throes of COVID, you know, I think our Midwest CPI was probably up in the five-plus, six-plus range. And frankly, you know, most communities can't afford to one year give a 6% for cost of living, and then possibly a step or a merit on top of that. So that's the justification for a cap. You know, whether we cap that at, you know, 3%, 3.5%, you know, just to kind of mitigate years of high inflation. So it kind of become a, you know, Midwest CPI up to 3.5% or 3%, whichever, whichever is less in that scenario. So it ties it to a metric, but also takes into consideration that in years of high inflation, it's frankly not going to be possible for a community to keep up. And at the same point, you don't want to overcorrect, and then all of a sudden, you know, you start to see deflation the years following.
I think that makes a lot of sense. We want to make sure that we're, you know, as cost of living increases for our employees, we want to make sure that we're keeping up with their salaries in that regard, too.
We were toying with that idea last year of going with the CPI and choosing number two.
Yeah, and I think it was built into one of the union contracts like that.
Sounds like that's a goal.
I think based on what I heard Josh say earlier, correct me if I'm wrong, Josh, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but.
Or Jake.
Jake?
Jake, Josh, wow. Is not to invest more in the study for the data we're going to get out of it anyway. If, which you in fact said is true, and we're going to come back to the whole point, we're going to have to freeze salaries anyway when we see that and the progressions that's been made with some of those smaller cities.
Yeah, freezing still kind of, yeah, I would just say, you know, like what the, what was chosen to do this year was the salary freeze outside of the cost of living adjustment. You know, that is kind of the tool that communities will use if you're not able to afford the merit increase. It's not very common to actually do some sort of wage reduction, right?
Correct.
So ultimately, if we get through this budget process, as Councilmember Armstrong was saying, too, we bring those budget numbers forward. And if we're not able to, you know, figure out a way through different mechanisms to include a salary increase within the budget, then we would, you know, likely revisit what we did this year, which would be a freeze. But a lot of that will be driven by where we as staff are just having our initial budget meetings. We're worried able to get that budget, too, as we bring it forward to city council in February for those workshops.
Right.
Is this something that we can table and decide later?
Yeah, MGT would be happy to update this study, I'm sure.
I'm sure they would.
In time for the $12,000 fee. So nonetheless, you know, as Courtney mentioned, these things don't last forever, right? So whether we do it now or not, I would certainly recommend in two years from now that we would revisit it just to make, kind of gauge at least where we're at in the market at that time. So ultimately, we should redo this at some point. The thing is, is we just are in a position where our current data is still valid. So we would essentially be paying to redo something that still works or is still valid in terms of the market accuracy. But once it is no longer valid, then I would certainly recommend an update so we can kind of regauge where we're at with the market.
Right here, though, kind of general thinking that we probably need a Midwest CPI with a cap. Am I hearing that correctly?
Yeah.
Just as a guide, and have staff kind of work on that, maybe, and bring back an idea or two?
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, you saw us scrimming over $576 tonight that we.
Yeah.
Is the maximum we could lose.
I know.
I mean, spending 12 grand, I don't think.
We're not to that point yet.
I don't think any of us are.
Right.
Josh, you have, do you have any questions? Are you still awake?
No, I'm here. I don't really follow baseball, so it took me a while to catch up and Google a few things. But no, I don't really see the point in spending 12 grand personally.
Okay. Yes, some direction. Okay, you know where we are? Okay. Well, if there's none other good for the order, I'd say we're done. Thank you. Appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you, Courtney.
Thank you.
Thanks, Courtney.